So Kokobo is, you know, that eruption of Wakanu and that's the reason why Japanese build a very expensive studio there. I think they should come and maintain it. So that's very important for that studio, I mean, that particular region of the region of the country, that particular studio. So please put more emphasis on that. And Jawaka, Jawaka, there are issues with staffing, but I think that is solved.
The staffing issue for Jawaka and also extends to Hela is that they were, they are still outside the 20, the current NBC structure is from 2013. So they were, they were not part of the, they were not included in the NBC structure when they were established. Okay, we've established the temporary offices. We are seconding staff from NBC Western Highlands and NBC Simbu to run there for the time being. We have, I think Chairman, you had an intervention in the previous inquiry. And we've got, we were, we are now talking with DPM through the Salaries and Conditions Monitoring Committee. They told us to give our funding request for these two provinces. That's about, works out to about 1.4 million per annum for the two provinces. So hopefully by, by next year, we should advertise these provinces' positions and they be filled permanently.
Okay, we'll just follow up with the DPM Secretary to ensure that those positions from Hela and Jawaka must go on advertisement for them to fill. And I think that's a, that's a good work. I think congratulations to the committee. At least we progressed that for Jawaka and Hela.
Thank you Chairman, because we've expended a lot of resources in the two provinces to set them up. They've got state-of-the-art studios, but we will self-defeat ourselves if we don't get those positions funded and people appointed to them. So thank you, thank you to the committee.
Good. I think we just, we just put down, noted down so that for the next inquiry, we'll follow up to make sure that those positions are filled. And now we, now the other next important question is housing for them. For them and other, maybe you mentioned something a bit, but you can expand on that. So that if they're listening, they can hear that we are raising that. Because this is one of the concerns that the journalists are raising.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Housing, I should say, housing is not yet a condition of employment in the public service, and NBC is one of them. But that's not to say that we are, we're not providing institutional houses for mission-critical staff, those who run the station, the technical staff, the managers who are there. So we do have, we do have staff, staff houses at headquarters and provinces as well. Hela and Jawaka are different because they are pretty much new. So we've started with the setup of the office and the studio, and then we'll extend on to the houses as well. We're currently renting accommodation for the staff at the nearby residence. But the medium to longer term intention is to set up a proper office and housing as well for the staff. So we are currently talking with provincial governments in both provinces and the lands department to identify land and then we start building from there.
I think that's, that's very important for the MOU. When you're doing the MOU, you should capture collaboration with lands department, provincial government. So allocate land for, and provincial government and DDAs can assist too. Because we are getting NBC reporters to the district to do our reports and all this. We should contribute too as part of DDAs and provincial government if we, you know. So that MOU is very important, very important. So I think that should be kept. The other thing, the other part that shift, they mentioned about working shift and shift allowance, overtime allowance. These are some issues that your staff from the regions are raising.
Thank you Chairman. On the shift allowance, I checked with our, and it's yesterday. The issue of shift allowances is that we've been requesting funding through the budget every year, and it has not been forthcoming until last year, where the Treasury Department in its wisdom allocated some funding. So I was told, was given a report that we funded some shift allowance this year already. So the issue was not so much refusing to pay, but the funding not been available to have it paid. I might overshoot my budget and be in trouble as well.
Okay MD, now that brings me another question, and I think, are you able to generate your own revenue?
We're a corporation and we are allowed to generate our own revenue as well. And we currently generating funds through, mostly through advertising. But that's not, not sufficient. I think it's so much to do with the the capacity we have at NBC to make it happen. We could do a lot more, but as it is now, we've got five staff who are there to generate revenue and it's, we keep pushing them, but that's where we are right now.
Have you been, do you have your strategic plan or five-year development plan mentioning anything about generating revenue in your development plan? Do you have a corporate plan?
We have a corporate plan that's expiring next year, so we're in the process of renewing that one.
Okay. I think maybe you should think about updating to include revenue generating in those corporate plan. We'll note it down, we'll note it down, and maybe next year when you, when in the next inquiry, we'll ask about your corporate plan and specifically on revenue generating. I think that's, that's all from me. Any committee members? Thank you, thank you NBC MD.
Thank you Chairman, thank you committee. It's been very fruitful discussions from yesterday and today. So thank you for your time as well.
Thank you. All right, we won't take a break. We will continue, we'll continue. Audience, I would like to acknowledge the presence of the Deputy Secretary for the Department of Information and Communication, Mr. Freel Songol. Welcome. And also, we would like to acknowledge the presence for the CEO of NICTA. Please, please take a seat, take a seat. My good CEO, I forgot your name. Okay, we acknowledge the presence of the CEO of NICTA. You CEO or managing director?
Chair, CEO.
CEO, okay. CEO of NICTA, Mr. Kila Guloui. Mr. Uwi, thank you for your presence. Okay, your attendance. All right, we went to the regions just to update you. I think Freel is already, we went to the regions to do our regional inquiries. And from the regional inquiries, our people from the regions have some questions with regards to you national agencies. So we are, here representing them to ask you those questions. So there's some questions for NICTA too, from the regions that we feel that NICTA should respond and we can provide them some answers. So I'll start with, who's ready to go first maybe? Governor?
I have only one question. Starlink. No other question. People are suffering like anything. Right now, Kendrian is totally, there is no network. These are maritime provinces. I'm sure this is applicable to most part of the, you know, country. I really can't understand, you know, the, how do we, what's the logic or how do we digest even for simple thing like how a smaller country like Fiji and, you know, all the Pacific countries have, you know, already have that instrument and, you know, helping there. Even in a country where they make a lot of money like, you know, through their own telecommunications, like Australia, they still have Starlink. India, they still have Starlink. These are countries where they are very protective about their industries and all. And I do not know, in a country where we still have like vast majority of our people to still be covered with, you know, communication network. This is not just communication. This is like trade. This is health. This is education. There are many other things which go along with this one. And this simple instrument, if it can, otherwise, whether it's telecom or digital cell or water phone, they have to come up with their own equipments if whoever is at the back of, you know, slowing down, taking the matter to court and all those things, slowing down. They have to come up with their own strategy or technology or instrument which can give, provide similar services so that we can buy and, you know, give it to some of our rural health centers and all these things. Of course, I don't have to elaborate. The one word, you know, keeps all the answers like. Something we know that this is going to be helpful for our rural masses and population, and it's going to transform. But yet, we are like blocking all the developments, you know, in the name of some legal challenges and many other, you know, hiccups. Only in this country, everything happens this way. You know, anything we just run to court, okay, we just slow down the process and, you know, people suffer. Ultimately, the people suffer. So what steps are we really taking? I know you are very keen and you have certain, you know, agreements all done according to, you know, your minister, but what is the delay?
Thank you, Honorable Governor. Maybe just wait for the minister chair to join us. Okay, well, thank you first of all. Let me apologize for coming in late. It was not intentional, but we just had the different timelines and there was some confusion on the schedule. So let me unreservedly apologize to the, to the committee, the chair and the ST members and of course colleagues here. Indeed, Starlink is a, is an issue as you may be aware. We are in court. The proceedings were started, commenced last year. And at this time, we expect a decision from the court anytime now. We recognize the need for connectivity. And as you are aware, the process unfortunately has been halted as a result of the directions that we have received not to proceed with the license. So in that context, NICTA to take steps to seek judicial review through the court. And I can't say more than that, other than to inform the committee that we, according to the last hearing, we were told that the decision on the matter could be issued anytime now.
Thank you, thank you CEO. CEO, that is great to hear. I hope we can receive the decision, you know, fairly quickly, even within this week or next week. CEO, that in terms of like, you know, the connectivity and access, what is NICTA's long-term strategy to expand affordable and reliable internet access across rural and remote areas, especially in the provinces like, you know, maritime provinces like our own with New Britain or Millen Bay or some remote provinces? That's one. Two, again, I did mention about same, like if any companies have, like what's, on the same subject on Starlink and other service provider, apart from Starlink, has NICTA assessed or approved other satellite-based internet providers? And if so, what benchmarks or criteria are being applied to ensure fair competition and service quality? As you all know that since yesterday's earthquake, there was an announcement from Dataco. The cables going to Mamasee and Niguni Islands are heavily damaged. And it's disrupted all the internet services and all. Okay. The third one, if you can note it down, CEO. Given the high cost and poor reliability of existing, you know, ISPs, why has NICTA? Okay, it is the same subject which you just answered waiting for quote. Why, I mean, NICTA has not fast-tracked technologies like Starlink that could have improved our schools and hospitals and our SMEs? And in terms of regulation and innovation, how is NICTA balancing regulatory control with the need to encourage innovation and private investment in the ICT sector? Just one last question you can note it down. In terms of our consumer protection, many consumers, you know, complain about poor internet. You know, the network, like digital network in Kimbe is terrible. We pay that same 150 kina for 50 GB or 100 GB or whatever, but it's useless, like it doesn't work. And many, we complain about poor internet quality despite, despite high data costs. What concrete steps is NICTA taking to enforce quality of service standards among existing providers? Thank you.
Thank you. I think those are very, very important questions. In terms of your, the first questions on NICTA's plans, on the bringing connectivity to all our citizens. Indeed, we share that government's priority to bring connectivity in the form of telephony, mobile, of course broadcasting and other forms of telecommunications. So in terms of our plans, of course, they are tied in very closely with the medium-term development for plans and which sets certain targets in terms of connectivity. So we do have a primarily two methods of approaching the government's connectivity agenda. One is through the Universal Access Program. And this is under the National ICT Act 2009. This program is basically the set the regulatory framework for universal connectivity. To bring connectivity to areas that commercial operators like Telecom, Digital Cell and Waterphone will not go because of commercial constraints. So under that program, under that regime, the act establishes what we call the Universal Access Fund. The fund provides for operators and all licenses of NICTA to make a contribution in the form of a levy determined by NICTA. And from those proceeds, programs are then delivered based on the approvals of the Universal Access Board and the minister. So that's one way of doing it. Another process is through the license obligations of operators. Both mobile operators and any licensee that NICTA is granted. So in the case of mobile services, the carriage, what we call their license carriage obligations on each of the licenses to provide telecommunications services throughout the country under very specific timelines and schedules. So Chairman, if I may inform this committee that NICTA, just last week, following an extensive consultation process, comments in late 2023, just concluded and published through the National Gazette, the license terms and conditions, standard terms and conditions and special conditions for all licenses. And in this case, through telecommunications operators, it provides for connectivity throughout the country. So it goes from the provincial capitals to the district centers, through the LLGs and to the wards. So each of the operators, Digital Cell, Telecom, Waterphone, currently have obligations to cover those areas. I will not, but I can draw you to the specific rule that you can, we can submit it in our next emissions, which it's actually now available and posted on our public register, which shows those obligations.
What is it called?
It's the Standards and Specials Individual License and Conditions Rule 2025.
So it's gazetted?
Yes.
Okay, so you can send the gazette information?
Certainly.
We would like you to submit it as part of evidence.
Absolutely. And for your information, you were just, the last session on the, it's also obligations on broadcast service providers as well. So Chair, so that's the obligations on the service providers. And if I may go quickly to the connectivity challenges on the, on the, so as we speak, the current connectivity in terms of mobile services is nearly close to 80%, just under 80%. About 78% of our population is within the reach of a mobile 4G signal. That's as at December 2024. This means that 40, about just under 80% of our population can access mobile services. This means that the signal is available. But in terms of actual assets, what we call the penetration, the actual subscription, the numbers are less, but they continue to grow. We currently over in around 50, 55% of the population as a mobile subscription, which accounts for nearly six, just under 6 million of the population as a subscribes to each of the networks. So that is indeed a, gives you some indication of the level of accessibility in terms of telecommunications services to our people. The governor rightfully asked questions on the costs, quality of service and the plans, the regulatory interventions and the how to encourage an innovative sector-driven investment in the sector. Indeed, the ICT, the National ICT Act, which provides the legal framework for ICT, provides for heavy reliance on the private sector to invest in the, in the sector. So through, our task is provide a conducive regulatory environment to promote investment in the sector and as well as to promote competition. In the absence of competition, it will be a challenge to bring, address the issues that the governor rightfully raised in terms of accessibility, affordability, extension of services. So our primary role is to promote competition through number of players. And of course, as the governor said, through technology competition. So in terms of satellite, the issue relating to LEOs, Starlink is one, but there are other competitive offerings that are on the horizon. And this same rule that was gazetted provides the license terms and conditions. So we now have a framework to address and encourage those sort of operations. So the issue on Starlink is very specific to that particular service provider. It doesn't restrict other providers of services. So the NICTA board is reviewing how to facilitate and enable other competitors to Starlink that could be potentially given an opportunity to participate. The cost and the affordability, that remains a primary priority for NICTA because making services affordable is critical to developing the digital society. So you will note over the last five years, in 2020, the cost of one gig per month was about 11 kina. Over the last four years, we've seen it calm down progressively. Currently, it's about 4 kina per gig. And it's trading in the right direction. You will note that we have, in the last 18 months, have actively addressed the affordability question. In last April, we introduced a regulation that is specific to Digital Cell PNG Limited insofar as voice communication is concerned prohibiting price discrimination within off-net and on-net subscribers. This particular regulation only applies to the dominant carrier, in this case, Digital PNG Limited. It does not apply to other operators that do not have that same sort of market share. Our regulation, our legal framework does provide an NBC state framework. So I'm just trying to inform you about some of the interventions that we are taking to, inconsistent with the government's affordability agenda. The other point was on consumer protection. We have a number of regulations governing that. Indeed, the the first response to any consumer complaints, the operators have the first right of, right to be afforded matter to be addressed. In the event that it's not addressed and that can be escalated to NICTA. But of course, there are rules and regulations governing the consumer. So those addressed as and when any such complaints are formally registered with either, with the operators or with, but in the first instance, the operators must address and respond to those issues affecting consumer. And if the consumers are not satisfied with the, then they can escalate it to NICTA. So Chair, I hope that's answered some of the questions, but we can provide additional information in terms of the regulations governing, governing the consumer and of course, the carriage obligations on, on operators as well as other licenses. I think you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you CEO. I mean, I take your point, little below 80%, you know, people are covered. This is where the main issue is. If a new company comes in tomorrow to Papua New Guinea, like what Waterphone did, they come, they first start with Port Moseby, where you can make money. Then they go down to Lay, then to the provincial centers. Not, of course, it makes commercial sense. Of course, now you are saying that we have regulations for them to reach out to rural areas and all those things. But mainly, those numbers of customers who live in those provincial capitals or Port Moseby City or Lay City are the beneficiary who can access, you know, this network. And very rarely, like for example, like everyone says, in Kimbe, the digital network doesn't work properly. Now suddenly, Waterphone is working properly, so people are happy, but that is within the town. Once you come out of the town, then the network doesn't work. If I want to go to Kendrian, I have no choice. I have to carry only digital cell phone. Because there is no telecom network, no other network, digital being the first one who extensively established, you know, towers. Even we paid, I can't remember, 2 million or 4 million at the time to expand towers to some of those remote areas and all. So one, their focus is mainly on, you know, the provincial capitals where actually they can have, you know, customers and all those things. The remote areas left with, the problem is, even we partner with them and they go and build towers, again, to look after those. For example, right now, a tower in Matlo in Kendrian is completely out of order. Of course, I would blame the people also because somebody must have done something to the solar panels. So that is causing. But now, in order to address that issue, as in, if it is in town area, of course, they are going to address it like maybe within a day or within a week. But this has been like almost since independence. I went to Kendrian, no network, until now, no network. Because it's not going to make a commercial sense for them to quickly go and address this issue because it was built on partnership arrangement and all those things. But people continue to suffer the entire district right now without any network. So in terms of health or education and all other sectors going to be affected. So I'm glad to hear that you are going to push them to, you know, the operators, Waterphone, not just in Kimbe, but you have to reach out to Bali Vito Island or remote places and all those. but you have to reach out to Bali Vito Island or remote places and all those things, that I think we have to closely monitor. DigiCell used to be an aggressive operator, you know, u- used to be very fast service and all those things. Kind of slowed down suddenly in the last, you know, maybe after the new ownership. I thought, uh, after Australia takeover, the service will be double. It's like, I, I honestly thought like we would enjoy the similar service what we have it in Australia, because the company is hundred percent owned by Australia. So they might bring the same standard, same speed, same everything, but, uh, we, we haven't, you know, seen. One other thing that service provider, including telecom, sometimes they have no network, nothing. You just pay fifty kina or hundred kina for data, and that whole month, it doesn't work, and your fifty kina is gone. Like, for example, in DigiCell, let's say I buy fifty GB. So I buy fifty GB for that particular, you know, I don't know how much exactly, maybe hundred kina or something. As soon as that fifty GB finishes, the system automatically starts taking your other balances. I, I had like five hundred kina in my account balance. But once that fifty GB has, you know, exhausted, that five hundred kina, entire five hundred kina finished in two days. Whereas fifty kina or hundred kina is enough to buy fifty GB. They do not allow you to wait for you to buy other data. So I had no choice but tick a box where it says renew automatically. Whether I use that hundred GB data a month or not, I automatically, you know, the money detects from my account, so that, uh, I don't have to lose my money, whatever the balance in it. Otherwise, once that data you buy exhaust, then it immediately jumps in to take your balance, which you keep it for, you know, voice data and all those things. So the money finishes like three hundred, four hundred kina is enough for maybe like two or three days. That money will be gone, whereas it's a matter of fifty kina to buy, uh, that data. In terms of this tower sharing, like the chairman was saying, you know, they're establishing some towers with data, um, uh, yeah, data co-, yeah, data code to, uh, build our own towers where it can host, you know, multiple service provider, like the same tower. I don't know, there's a tech- technical term or something to it. Yeah, colocation, uh, location share or colocation, where all the service providers have, are you really enforcing or implementing that? And then this, uh, number pairing facility, like, for example, I, I have my number seven one nine two six eight six eight. So if I want to change it to another service provider, you, you know, you just change. The number, number doesn't belong to DigiCell hundred percent, where, once you change your carrier, then you have to change the number also. I, I remember when I was in, uh, India recently, I had another mobile network, but I used the same number, but they changed to another service provider, kind of. So I think it's called pairing or something. What, what are we, how are we addressing portability? Yes, thank you.
Uh, uh, thank you, um, uh, governor. And li- I noted the, some of the concerns on the, the, the customer experience, in terms of, uh, data plans and, uh, loss of credits. So I, I, I know that we'll, uh, take down a board with the, uh, operators, but let me just, just reflect on some of those comments. Number one, um, the, the user experience in terms of use of, um, uh, prepaid, uh, services, if you like. You know, you choose based on the plan, and you also choose where you want to subscribe to that plan, and then it, you have options to either opt in or opt out. So it depends on how you set up the, your engagement with the service provider. So sometimes if you, okay, okay, it will automatically sub- you are sub- automatically subscribed to that plan. So when it expires, or, uh, it registered, then it automatically kicks in. Sometimes you also have options for, you know, credits, so. And this is where I recognize maybe consumer awareness and education could help, so the subscribers can, you can, because these are options, they're not mandatory, but you choose to either subscribe or not. And then you have a lot of, many, a lot of options. So if you are logged in, then you can't get out until you actually lock out of that service, I mean, opt out of that service. So I, I fully know that we will address that, uh, in terms of our ongoing engagement with the operators. Tower sharing, under the current regime, you recall I mentioned the Universal Access scheme? If a project is implemented using those funds, under the current regime, that facility has to be shared. And it has to be shared on the terms and conditions that are set out by NICTA. And I can draw you to the regulations that govern that particular issue. So this, uh, let me, uh, make it very clear. This, uh, this is infrastructure built under the Universal Access Fund. This same regime does not apply to, uh, infrastructure that operators or licenses, build out of their own plans or on, on their business plans. For that, NICTA has to declare through a public inquiry process on infrastructure sharing. We have a, a, a very high threshold in the legislation, that NICTA must meet before it can make a recommendation to the minister, to bring those services under regulatory oversight. Having said that, I am, we're currently engaging with the industry to engage and in voluntary, sharing, so that is ongoing. The three operators, the three big operators, Vodafone, DigiCell and Telecom, are currently exploring sharing of towers, uh, particularly beyond built-up areas. It's not, certainly not cheap to duplicate infrastructure. You'll see three towers in a mountain top, obviously, that is coming at an economic cost. So that conversation is happening. Uh, in terms of, uh, number, it's what we call number portability. This means you use the same number and you can, you, you can move to another operator. If you are currently on a DigiCell, uh, this, DigiCell subscriber with a number prefix seven one, seven two, seven three, and you want to retain that ma- number and move to another operator to B-Mobile or Vodafone, let's call number portability. Uh, Chairman, I'm, uh, uh, want to, uh, take this opportunity to inform you. NICTA has undertaken a public inquiry into that matter. We have concluded all the, uh, work that we need to do, and under that law, we have to submit our report to the minister. Minister is then, uh, has to submit that, uh, process to, uh, a similar, uh, before he can take addition. So based on the cost benefit analysis that NICTA has concluded, indeed, mobile number portability, uh, potential for implementation, uh, the co- best cost of, the be- benefits of implementing number portability is, uh, is better than not doing it. So we have put a recommendation to the minister to implement number portability, and the minister is required under the law to go through that process. So at this time, I'm pleased to inform the committee that we did make a, our recommendation to the minister, in early September. So, uh, this is a very technically, um, the, uh, process. So implementation will take time, from the time the minister endorses the recommendation, after going through his, on the process, I think under section eighty-eight of the Act, our Act, the National ICT Act. Then he can make a final decision, and then implementation will take couple of years.
Thank you, uh, committee members from regional inquiries, you, you can summarize some questions if.
Thank you, uh, Chairman and, uh, CEO. Uh, before I go on to the questions from Kokopo, uh, I just want to go back to, uh, the chief's center's, uh, presentation. And that is with regards to the URLs. The chief's, uh, has, uh, in this inquiry admitted about thirty-three thousand, I believe, URLs, uh, that were submitted to be, uh, omitted, I believe, or to be taken off, uh, of the, uh, of the internet. Uh, how far have we gone to progress this? Um, at the same time, we know that, you know, media has played a, played a significant part, in terms of influencing, uh, the way our people think and behave. And some of those, uh, contents that we are concerned about, uh, being accessed by our kids, or being open to, uh, people out there. So I'm just so curious and concerned about this negative content that we are not seriously looking at to remove immediately. Uh, and what serious steps are we gonna take into the future to look at this? I think it's, it's a call for action. Uh, we hear that the legislation has taken ten years to, uh, remove, uh, for the review. Ten years, two thousand fourteen to now, two thousand twenty-five. How can it take us ten years to, uh, look at a provision? And those are the kind of questions that we left to raise to state soul. And then, uh, with the URL, we had this in the first inquiry and it has taken us twelve months. And we haven't done, uh, haven't taken any action in terms of, uh, those URLs that were recommended by the chief censor, uh, to be removed. So, uh, and if you can provide a feedback on, on, on this, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh. Sorry, thank you, uh, member. Yes, I can confirm that, uh, the, the directions to, uh, uh, the content in that con- in that context. So the agencies that coordinate and collaborate in this effort, uh, actually, i- i- on this table now, uh, that's of course the, uh, since, uh, and the, and the, uh, good department, uh, DICT. So it's a collaborative effort. Uh, this, uh, challenge, uh, spreads across multiple agencies. So, uh, but, uh, we've been endeavoring to address this. Um, first of all, any, we don't have the authority, NICTA does not, uh, have the authority to, in terms of classification. That's my good chief censor's role. So what I does is that they, uh, it may have already informed you, they classify those, and then I think there's a particular classification that does not meet that requirement, and then it notifies us to take them down.
Can, can I just interrupt? Uh, you're, you're, you're updating a legis- it's, it's very good that we're having this conversation. You are updating your legislation, so you, you can identify classify, and NICTA now does the enforcement of banning. Can you, can that particular enforcement in under your legislation move back to you instead of NICTA? I, I'm asking the chief censor, sorry. It's, it's gonna answer, but it's, uh, answering the current situation, but I'm, I'm trying to ask, uh, about, uh, about your legislation you're doing. Yeah, those powers, you are waiting for NICTA. NICTA is saying that, uh, to classify those information, NICTA need your power to classify. So once you use your power to classify, now NICTA will implement. What I'm saying is, instead of NICTA implementing, you use your power to classify and at the same time put restriction. Does your power apply, is that, or?
Uh, Chairman, uh, that, uh, we looked into it, and, uh, that's part of the amendments that have been, uh, catered, in that, uh, uh, that review that we have done.
Okay, all right, thank you. Back to you, you can continue to answer the questions.
Thank you. So under the current arrangements that we have, uh, agreed to and collaborate in is that, the chief censor, uh, performs that role, classifies which sides, need to be taken off. He communicates that in writing to NICTA. We do not necessarily perform that, but we, uh, direct the licenses to take them down. It is a lawful direction, and the licenses, Telecom, Vodafone, and all other licenses, in- including internet service providers, they have an obligation to take them down. So based on our, uh, uh, discussions with the operators, we receive, uh, regular, uh, reports on it. So that effort is ongoing, but we, we, we are actually addressing a, a live matter. When you shut down, it comes up even different forms. So we're just going like this. So this is a, a, ongoing challenge. Um, so one of the things that we have done is the same rule that I referred to, uh, that has been recently published, ob- uh, obliges the internet service providers to take any side down upon direction by NICTA. It is now a license condition. So as soon as we receive notification by the chief censor telling us that, okay, this is the least, this, this, these sites have to be taken off, we communicate that to the licenses. With the coming into force of this particular, uh, regulation, that strengthens that, uh, NICTA's ability to give lawful directions to the licenses to take that action. Our challenge, this is a moving target. It's not fixed. So that is the challenge that we are confronted with. Once you take it down, it comes up in another shop form and shape. Obviously, it can't be in the original shape. I thank you.
Yes, uh, that's so important, I think, as, as agencies responsible and as gatekeepers. I think, uh, you know, we need to have that capacity to, to counter this challenge that is before us. Um, you know, most of the, what's happening today in the country, uh, it's the content that is influencing our youths and young people. I give you an example, uh, in a TV one series. You have a series, uh, that is promoting violence. I think I did, the title is Mafia Against Us or something. Filipino movie, even they're speaking in pidgin when, uh, acting this movie. And so those kind of contents that's influencing, uh, our youths out there, and of course, with internet. I think we need to, uh, seriously take stock of this, and how do we exercise our power? Powers in the act to, to restrict this. Of course, the license holders, uh, you know, profit driven, and they will still want to find a way to, uh, avoid this because of the user. I mean, thirty-three thousand is a big number, and I think there's another thirty-three thousand pending to be, uh, looked at. So you're talking about sixty-six thousand URL, uh, sites here. And of course, you don't need to go into detail what those sites are, I think, uh, it's obvious. But I think they, they have been influencing the way our people think and most of the activities, uh, law and order issues, that, that are happening out there. Um, and the my second question is in regards to the data core. I know you have, uh, mentioned this, and of course, the governor has mentioned about the earthquake, uh, that has happened in the MoMA's region and has affected. How do you see this into the future? Uh, is it gonna help us? Uh, in terms of, uh, service cost cutting, I believe you, you mentioned, uh, it is significantly helping cutting cost, uh, from eleven kina to four kina, I believe. But how do you see this into the future? Uh, the significance of this, uh, program which government is significantly, uh, invested in, uh, over the years. And, uh, of course, the accessibility, uh, to our rural mass. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, honorable, uh, member. Just on the first point, on the, um, content and, um, that sort of thing. Let me also inform you that we also have a, a, a draft, um, regulation that has been on the, uh, subject of consultation, will, will share it with you. Uh, because of the jurisdictional issues, we are trying to see who does it. So it addresses a lot of issues that you, uh, honorable member, you are referring to, in terms of decency and standards, so applying to particularly broadcasting service providers, radio and television, not necessarily the, uh, internet. But that, that's an ongoing conversation, and, uh, we've been engaged. But that's an ongoing conversation and we've been engaging on those issues. So we'll be more than happy to share that draft with you. Coming to data core, we are talking about a critical infrastructure. Telecommunications infrastructure under C cables is indeed a critical infrastructure. This situation that arose this morning is of course nobody planned for it. So, but in the planning of networks, obviously there are redundancy parts. So when the cable is done, you would easily route your traffic to your, through backup carriers. So that's where satellite usually provides that gap. So we will continue to invest in cable networks because the performance of such systems are much, much superior than other technologies. So cable systems, yes, but it's a critical infrastructure. It's unfortunate that in terms of redundancy, the limitations, you know, they can only, data core, I'm not sure about its redundancy part, but it will reroute the traffic through other cable systems, reroute it through satellite. Depends on the network architecture. But all I'm saying is the cable systems constitute a critical part of the telecommunications infrastructure. I think we will need to look at, of course, we can't plan these sort of situations, but how can we control man-made issues where we got a lot of cable cuts around the country, this sort of things. So I think that may need, a need for specific protection of those sort of assets. So that is an area that I think that could be looked at. Indeed, it's been looked at, I understand, it's a critical infrastructure issue that needs to be, they need to be protected. In the telecommunications sector, this is a backbone of the whole network. So in terms of availability, depends on how data core is restructured, is redundancy path, whether it's when I take it back to Sydney, through Mosby and then around the other systems or why a satellite backup.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, member for Guila. You have questions? You're right. Okay, I think most of the questions from the original inquiries you have answered, but there's a like from the original inquiries, there seem to be some misunderstanding or some confusion on the role of NICTA. Do you regulate Facebook?
That's a very interesting question. We regulate it through local licenses. If you follow what I mean, Facebook is not in our jurisdiction. So we can't directly supervise its conduct. But for those that are providing services, digital water phone, of course they provide it, we go through them. So that's why when we said, I referred to if they say we need to control or intervene, it's through our local licenses.
That's, you will have to issue instructions to?
Our operators because they have the license.
Telecom?
Yeah, the licenses.
Okay, please, you have to, our audience don't know what are licenses. You have to speak in layman terms. So how do you regulate Facebook? Through your license, you explain or something, you all be there but something, talking about people, you think him?
Yes. So we can't go directly through them. The best we are doing is if there's an incident that involves Facebook, for instance, we work with the National Cyber Security Center, that's their initial response. For instance, they then erase the flag with Facebook or any content providers directly. If that can be resolved, but we can't hold them directly responsible. And through that, we work through our operators licenses, in this case telecom, digital water phone and any other ISPs that provide Facebook services. So initial reaction, if they say bigger issues like, you know, then of course the first step is to reach out to them and we do that through our, the department that manages the National Cyber Security Center. We got the scopers there that reach out to them and see if those can be addressed. And if we need to go further, then we go through the operators.
Okay, there's some information or some sort of ideas that people have that think that you as NICTA, you'd be able to trace. If someone posts a content on Facebook, some information, some graphical image, some sexual content on Facebook, if they report to you, NICTA, you'd be able to trace to them. Am I correct in saying that?
That will be through collaboration, through Facebook. Through, so that will be a collaborative effort. Yes, we can assist, we can support and mobilize resources to pursue those sort of complaints.
So if someone posts something on Facebook and if they, you establish a process on how if, how a normal citizen, if they get offended or feel, you know, attacked or abused on Facebook, what would be the process they will follow to seek, to trace, to trace? Like for example, someone, someone went and did something, posted something, did an AI picture of someone naked for a particular, maybe a lady. And that particular lady feel offended and she wants to report that crime. What actions, what's the process he will take to report it so that you can help her trace to that particular person who posted content on Facebook?
Yeah, that's an important question. I'm sure you are aware of the Cyber Crime Code two thousand and sixteen. That would be the primary legislation to take any action on that in terms of if what a constitution of offense or not. So the, like any other complaints, they have to file a complaint through the process. And then I think we have the Royal Department and Constabulary that receives, there's a cyber security center there. The complaints have to be formally registered and then the police will take that further. And then of course, agencies like us will support that process. So at this time, if there's such complaints, they refer to the police to take that action. Under the cyber crime code. So once that process is started during the course of the investigations, then of course we will support it going forward.
So at what point of the investigation will you come in? They will have to, cyber crime police have to contact you or?
Yeah, that's the process. They will start that process and if they need assistance and of course they can request assistance from any of the agencies that think that can help the process.
So can you confirm that you can trace that post to a particular person who posted content on Facebook?
Well, we will need time to establish that, but there are processes and protocols that we will need to go through. For instance, Facebook, they own the community standards. So if that meets, does not meet that standard, then obviously they will take it down. So the different content providers have their own, those sort of standards. So if it's within that category and if I say, for instance, our scopers rule out to them, reach out to them, then they can do it easily. But if it's, does not fit in the standards, then that's when we have to start engaging, say, to reach out and understanding how that should be addressed. So there are indeed protocols to go through that if there starts a request.
The protocols is in PNG or overseas?
Sorry, through our internal process, then we reach out to the relevant content provider.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to get to the bottom of like, if someone posts a content, can we trace to that number or that mobile phone?
Well, let's say the SIM card registration is in place. If they say number that can be identified or linked to that subscriber, yes, it can be detected.
Okay, so what's your, how's your SIM card registration going on?
Thank you, yes, it's going well. We actually conduct annual audits. The most recent one was in two thousand twenty-four. So we are in that system now, we will be conducting our annual SIM card audit with the operators, telecom, water phone and digital around late next month. So CD, let me take the opportunity to clarify that this is an ongoing process. Once a new subscriber comes onto the network, it's required to to be registered. So there's no cut of date. If all. We have, I said earlier, we have about nearly six million subscribers. We have another six or twelve, six or ten, four million people to get on the network according to them. Each of them have to be registered. The challenges we are having now with ID, but once that is cleared, once they are registered, that registration is maintained until the subscriber decides to terminate the service or for, is not able to maintain the service, then it it is de-registered through the operator's processes. So for instance, if your SIM is inactive for a month, it will go to an inactive categorization. If it stays inactive for a further period, say two months, stays there. And then at some point, they will take it off and at that point it will be formally de-registered or recycled. That number will be reassigned to the pool and they will then reassign it to the next subscriber.
So who sets the policy for the de-registration of SIM?
That's a commercial process. The regulations provides for the basis of registration. So when the, it's the subscriber subscribes to a network, then the, how that process is managed in terms of the subscriber's accessibility to the network is of course subject to his ability to maintain those by subscribing, paying and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think you should also include the regulations to this, the register those, those are people who are not using the SIM for some time.
Exactly. So typically what happens is at most three months, it's, you know, after one month, they put it in the inactive category. So if it remains inactive, meaning that they don't top up regularly for an extended period, then when it's three months, then that number is, the person tied to that SIM is de-registered. That number is then put back to the pool within its operator's pool of resources. So if our next subscriber comes, then that can be reassigned on the basis of a new registration.
Okay, so I think with, that's really good. So you mentioned about eighty percent of the population have access to 4G network.
Yes, just under eighty percent, about seventy-eight.
Oh, what statistics you based on? Which information you using to base for mobile operators or?
Yeah, this on mobile operators, based on our, the data that we get from operators.
So what are you measuring against our population? Did you get the census?
Yes. Well, let's, not the two thousand and, we're still waiting for the report of that. That's based on the last census numbers. So obviously it will be updated when the report comes out.
So that's based on two thousand and eleven census? You have not received the?
Not yet.
Okay, so the eighty percent is based on two thousand?
Yes.
So what's your standard for mobile network, 4G or 5G?
Yes, it's very good that you asked that question. Yes, we are planning for 5G rollout. Currently, the, one of the NICTA's primary responsibilities is to plan the radio spectrum. It is basically the airwaves that the signals go through. So indeed, 5G, NICTA has connected 5G planning, the spectrum is all set. As you recall, honorable minister, acting minister, similarly made an announcement, I think in, just before independence. So currently, we are looking at the, allow the operators to test. So they are testing the systems as we speak on 5G, particularly DG and water phone have been testing on 5G. And then the actual process, we have to go through a formal licensing process to assign that this particular frequency, 5G spectrum, to the right operators. So that process, we are going through preparing documentation as required under the law to enable that process to start. So at this time, chairman, the schedule is by, by the first quarter of next year, we should be in a position to issue 5G licenses to the operators to enable them to roll out 5G services.
Next year?
Yes.
First quarter?
Yes.
Okay, so is that the same time that you will make sure that all operators sees 2G and upgrade all the towers to 4G?
That's a very, very good question. You maybe are aware that 2G and 3G in most countries are not been decommissioned.
Yeah, so when are we decommissioning those in PNG?
Yes, that's a, like I said, we've, we haven't set a schedule yet because the rural areas need those services at most, most of the services.
Areas need 4G. They don't need 2G or 3G?
Absolutely. So if you know the?
If you're saying that they need 2G and 3G, you're lying, they need 4G.
Absolutely, I agree. The 2G, all I'm saying is it's now been scaled down. We hit numbers about, population coverage of 2G was about ninety percent. With the rollout of 4G, it's been progressively coming down. We don't want to put a immediate stop to 2G because there are certain areas, certain sections of our communities that are using only for voice only. So.
Because they don't have 4G, so they're using only for voice?
Yes, that could be a reason, but also that we also have a high electricity rates. So.
Which data are you basing on to say UFI electricity?
Well, based on the public information, we've got about sixty-six percent of the population is electric.
Should we work on getting the electricity up instead of basing on our policy on, because low literacy, so we don't have to put this and that? Why can't we work on improving our literacy? 4G should be improving our literacy.
Absolutely, we agree. So that's why the 4G is being pushed. In fact, under the, under the UAS, if you have to bid for this project, it has to be only 4G only. We just align for any other communities that may not have that ability to use 4G. That's why it's been, we continue to do that. But it will be this commission anything.
You have to give me a timeframe on when the 2G will be decommissioned and 3G will be decommissioned.
Absolutely, we can do that. It is clear that they will be phased out. It's just a matter of timing. So if it's the right time to read, we certainly, we have plans, but we're just making sure that at the same time, we do not disconnect people from the network by dis-commissioning a technology, that particular technology.
And we are, by waiting, we are not having our kids, small kids, children, early childhood education. They are now being delivered using 4G network, using all this network. This whole transformation is happening. And our rural, our rural population are being missed out. That's my concern here, the community concern of being, they have the right to access to information, section fifty-one.
Thank you.
Of the constitution.
Thank you, Chair. I think if you see the numbers that we will share, 2G is in the decline and 4G is up. That's why I said 4G, we are in the forty percent, nearly eighty percent mark of our population and 2G is coming down. So it's actually happening as we go, as we push out the 4G.
Please, can you give me a timeframe on when you will decommission 2G and 3G in this country?
We will certainly do that.
Because all the other communities, they were trying to roll out all this thing about child welfare, education, police. We all depend on the net. We all depend on the network, this transformation. So as NICTA regulator of ICT, you need to give a timeframe on when you will decommission two G and three G and all of us will focus on only four G and five G.
Thank you. So four G is on, five G, the plan is to hit the major towns first. Mosby, Ley, Hagen, those areas first and then keep the, keep pushing it out. So we fully know to, we'll give you a timetable on two G, it could be decommissioned anytime. The idea is to, by doing so, we don't disconnect the rest of the communities that don't have access to that sort of capability. So it's a a balance. So you will see, as we share the numbers, you will see a steady decline in two G subscriptions that is expected. And then as four G and uh three G and four G have been increased, you'll see.
I think we seem to underestimate our people. We think that they only all use one bank phone and they will depend on two G. But if you go to the real areas, they they use smartphones. They already using smartphones. They they, they do the sell the coffee, sell the cocoa, sell the olive oil gold and they buy smartphones. They can be able to access four G. So it's it's just a mindset we're having on our rural communities and we're restricting them to some services. They they can have access to those services if we provide those services. Just just some information. I'm from the rural area, so that's why I'm saying. I'm seeing my 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 uh my very, very remote areas, they have access to smartphones. So now without the four G network, they'll be unable to access those WhatsApp or, you know, YouTube or some channels where they can get information from. Uh, we will ask for end date to four, uh, two G and uh three G so that we can force the operators, force the operators to go on four G. They have to update the communication. Some of them made money already and they're selling their network and went away already. So selling the business, they made money, sell the business and they went. So they're able to buy their new business, they'll be able to upgrade their network. You don't worry about how they make the money. Force them to go on four G and three G, uh, five G.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a follow-up question because NBC is here. Uh, the MD was talking about internet radio. So is this where the four G needs to come in so that that plan of use, having internet radio in the rural communities to work?
Thank you. It's related. Internet radio will only work when there's internet connectivity. Yes, so yeah.
Okay, by CEO, back to you. Have some, have some more questions. Uh, U A S. So how many towers have you built, communication tower have you built since U A S, using the funding from U A S?
Uh, initially about fifty nine towers and there are others in the procurement stage.
Okay, those fifty nine towers, are they being shared?
Yes, they.
Based on your policy and your regulations, they should be shared, are they being shared?
Yes, they are subject to sharing, yes.
They're subject to sharing, but are they being shared by other operators? Like, I, I, who owns, build most of these towers?
Most of the towers are built by DigiCell.
Okay, is DigiCell sharing those towers with Waterphone and Telecom?
Yes, those are commercial, they can engage, they open to having those commercial discussions and if they fail, then they can come and see us. We went at any.
If you go and check if those towers are being shared, whose responsibility to check if those towers are being shared?
We will become aware when the, any, say, if DigiCell, in this case, for those fifty nine, DigiCell owns them and any other operator is free to approach them to share their shares. So that process is a commercial arrangement. They can engage. And in the event that when they do not agree, then they can come and see us and then we can facilitate.
Can you, can you, can you provide the list of the towers, the fifty nine towers?
Sure.
Which locations? So as a committee, we can find out whether those towers are being shared or said or not. We'll ask this. You want us to ask this?
You can, but it will be, you know, in terms of the sharing, the uh the process, like I said, any, any operator can request the sharing by any, any other, those facilities shared or owned by or managed by the other operators, they can ask them to share. And if they don't, during the process of their arrangements, if they are not able to resolve any such uh issues, then they can come and see us. You can, yes, please, you can inquire on that. But we can provide the the list. We can also provide you the accompanying regulations that provides the framework which, under which they will have to engage.
Okay, all right. Yes, please, we we are interested to know because we think that by setting the towers, that that should help reduce the cost of management of those towers.
Maybe, Chair, on that note, you see, we also aware that there are also some initiatives by, you know, members on the, from the discretionary funds to provide the towers and this is where NICTA needs to be informed because then we have to apply those regulations to them. In the absence of that, if you engage directly with, you know, commercial basis, then the intervention, room for intervention is very restricted. It becomes a commercial entity between you and the operator. But if you inform us and then we can subject that sort of regulation to the service provider that provides that you engage with. So those rules apply to them as well. Just just for noting.
No, thank you. I have, actually, just just for noting also. I have, I have written to NICTA regarding my M O U, sorry, my D D A's M O U with Dataco. We are building a tower in Biaru in Waware district and it's up for sharing. It's a, it's a built design in such a way that it can be shared with uh operators, three operators. Waterphone is on board now and we would like Telecom and DigiCell to also come on board. Can you force them to come on board?
No. That will be a a commercial arrangement. Uh, in the event that they, you are not able to reach agreement, yes, you can raise the flag and we talk to them.
Yeah, constitutionally.
Yes.
Section fifty one of the constitution gives people access rights to information. And if some information provided by digital network is not accessible by the community, the citizens, then it will call for you to step in.
So like I said, have that conversation if it doesn't work and then at that point, you can.
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to have conversation with DigiCell now and later with Telecom. And if they don't come on board, then I'll bring all of you into the inquiry again. Is that all right?
Well, you will have to allow the process to, under the law, to happen first. If it doesn't work and then.
Okay, just just for noting only.
Yes. But that's a good conversation. So what happens is they engage as commercial operators. Like we said, we have to encourage the that sort of spirit so that then when they disagree, then then we have to come in and try to help and resolve the issue.
That's right. We just, it's an inquiry, it's a matter of sharing information. So we just for noting only that Waware is building a tower, called tower that can be able to share with, between three operators or four operators. So Waterphone is on board now and we appeal to DigiCell and Telecom to also come on board and also NBC to come on board also and MTV to come on board also. So that sort of model tower can be applied to other areas. I know you're trying to build cables, but in some, PNG is a geography challenged area. That cables go earthquake, destroyed again. So towers should be, we should be also pushing for towers to go to those very, very remote areas.
Absolutely, you're correct, Chairman. So the 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 program focuses on mobile connectivity to, for the reasons that you stated. So the obligations on mobile operators is exactly for that reason. Cable is good for bringing the, you know, backup, bringing it into the key centers and then take it further to the uh, the last mile access.
With the towers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They are complementary.
I think uh in terms of regulations, you are, you are regu-, do you have partnership, any provincial governments or any D D A's or?
Yes, we we have, currently, we have a partnerships with the the project areas. And of course, M O is with a number of agencies. At that, at this time, we were working with the Morbe provincial government. We, we, we haven't finalized that yet, but there is a a ongoing conversation around. We received a proposal from the Morbe. And then so we also looking at the other provincial governments that have expressed that desire to collaborate. So we are open to having that conversation with interested. Because it's true that collaborative effort that we can reach our communities and those communities know the people better than we do from from here. So we encourage that collaboration. So at the moment, we are looking, talking to a number of provincial administrations, including Morobe and Manus and then others, of course.
That would be really good because we are creating entities, states is creating entities, entities at Baigani, but some of the staff at the province are not happening at the provincial level where the people are. Like, for example, we had an inquiry with the Aluial Mining Inquiry into Aluial Mining in this country and SIPA. We created the center of SIPA, but they they issue license, but they have not monitored the license on the ground level. So they have not, they don't have capacity to monitor the license at the ground level. So I'm just, I'm just thinking of NICTA. You may issue license, but do you have the capacity at the ground level to monitor those license? The partnership and collaboration with the provincial and local level government and D D A's would be the, should be the way forward for national agency to have collaboration with those guys at the, because you want, we are just one government. So you have the national government and provincial government and local level government. So there should be some sort of collaboration between national government, provincial government and local level government in terms of NICTA. So it's good that you are looking into that. That's that's my final comment to you. Any other comment for NICTA? No, okay, Gutla, you you must stop yet. Gutla, D I C T, you're on board, we'll go on. Secretary, no stop, but you stop. Uh, you guys were tasked last time to come up with a technical working group. All three of you. What happened to the technical working group to work on the legislations and policies? The, that is uh cybercrime, man, no cybercrime, but you, if the secretary, deputy secretary, suppose if you, if you recall, were you in that inquiry, you were tasked to create a working, technical working group to look at some of the legislations and policies that is outstanding, including the censorship one. Have you formed that technical working group or committee?
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman and the members of the committee. I'll speak on what is happening now. First and foremost, I think there is already a collaboration between the three agencies for, including the censorship.
Yeah, collaboration, we know, but just form, form, we call it cross, strengthen cross-agency technical working group.
Okay, that, maybe I'll approach it this way. That we now have a number of policies that is in place. And that policy is now, number one is the, first is the media policy, development policy. Then we have the social media policy that got recently approved. Okay, that media policy now calls for what we call the e-safety directorate. That calls for all of us, including police and other security.
E, e-safety?
Directorate, National E-Safety Directorate.
Okay.
That calls for that establishment.
Okay.
Okay, what we are doing in the department, we already have the social media desk.
Okay.
That is operational and that social media desk has the administrative arrangements with Meta, which is Facebook. So there is an understanding. When we receive complaints, like what colleagues have been mentioning, then we verify, we check against the community guidelines of Meta. And then we alert and we request that they take down those posts. So that that arrangement is ongoing and the social media desk will now be a critical part of that the National E-Safety Directorate.
Okay, so.
So there is the arrangement that is now in place. In terms of calling all the parties together, we we are working on a clear terms of preference and will, as soon as possible, bring. So first thing first, we now got the policy in that establishes the directorate and is calling for the committees to come together.
Okay, Secretary, I'm, I'm, we are interested in the policies that are outstanding and legislations. One is the censorship Act that needs amendment. The other one is the media policy, which is media development policy, it's which, it's not been gazetted, it's been gazetted?
The media development policy has been adopted, the data governance and protection policy has been adopted. Uh, what else? The social media policy has been adopted by cabinet. So they are now into implementation phase and we are looking at the legislation that will enable this effective implementation now of these policy goals.
Okay, very good. Uh, what about Cybercrime Amendment Act?
Cybercrime twenty sixteen act.
Yeah.
Okay, that act, uh, what we are doing is strengthening the enforcement of that act. I think if you look at that act, it's sufficient as it is. The challenge we have is in the enforcement of the particular act. But we are now looking at the 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 Budapest, we have acceded to the Budapest Convention. It's going through the process, I think it was uh.
Oh, that's.
It went through the parliament, I think you you play rectify him, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, Budapest Convention. And there's another one that will be supporting that one as well is the UN Convention on Cybercrime. So these two, we are working on it and we will bring it to parliament as soon as possible.
This, this, this session next to it?
I think Budapest is ready to come to parliament and we'll, we'll check on that and we'll inform you.
No, it has to come, come to parliament because the last time we, we mentioned that we, we have to do that quickly because of the issues with the social media. So.
Okay.
We, we, did you, did you, did you guys receive a letter from?
Let me, let me correct this one. There's two approaches. Uh, one is that it will come through the parliament for rectification, but there's also another provision that will allow it to go through maybe the prime minister, through special provision to allow it to go straight to gazetol. And then we deposit. So I think we took the other, other approach.
Okay.
So my understanding that this was already gazetted, the Budapest, and now it's ready for for us to go to UN to deposit the instruments. So that is the stage that we are at now. So we'll give you update.
We already access to Budapest?
We will deposit the instrument and that will conclude the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when will you deposit the instrument?
November, I think it's happening in November and I will get some update from secretary, we'll, we'll inform you, update you on this one.
Okay, okay. Okay, please inform us by writing.
Yeah, we'll do that, thank you.
Before the parliament session, which is on the twentieth of October, so we need the update, all the updates of the legislations. Okay, that's, that's one, Budapest. Uh, we want an update, our media policy is done, so you can give an update on those policies you're working on, huh?
Yes, we'll do that.
Uh, the other, access to information, right to information, what's the status with this bill now?
Okay, right to information, it's been driven by multi stakeholders, including the civil society and the government side. We are still at the policy stage. Uh, we have a work plan that runs into end of this year to get the policy through and then get into the legislation, F O I legislation. So that's, that's the work plan that we have. It's facilitated through the O G P secretary in national planning. Uh, but the Department of I C T is leading the cluster on freedom of information and that is where the legislation, F O I legislation is. The advice from State Hall and the Jack is that we, we need to get the policy in place as soon as possible, that will inform the policy.
That, that was the last update to get the policy in place. So now you're giving the same update here.
Okay, so we have the policy in place. It's sufficient to go in, but we are backed by the civil society that we need to go out furthermore for further consultation, regional consultation. So that is the, because of the various stakeholders, we are trying to accommodate the interest of all our stakeholders in the process itself. So process itself is taking longer. So we are thinking of going out for regional consultation before end of year. Again, we are constrained by the resources, but we are talking. But we are talking to the UNDP to support us in going out to consultation, all our partners, development partners out there. Because OGP is also in the agenda as well. So that is something that we, it's our priority as well.
Regional consultation is the one that you.
Yes.
You have to do it before you can.
Take the policy in.
Take the policy in.
The approach is that we told them we can take the policy through. That's the civil society view is that policy has to go through regional consultation. We say, okay, perhaps we need to fast track policy, we take it through, we see that it's sufficient. We have done some consultation already. And then through legislation, that's where we go extensive consultation throughout the country. But the expectation, we must go through, policy must go through regional consultation. So we have to accommodate all expectations.
That's, that's.
This is what will happen.
Yeah, you have to do the regional consultation. So you set any timeframe, who's responsible to do the, who's taking care of that particular?
The policy is within the department.
Department, so you are responsible.
We are responsible and we can, it's manageable, we can get a policy out. Depending on the funding, if we get the funding quickly to go out for regional consultation.
Maybe you can ask UNDP to help or any other donors to help because this is very important.
UNDP has given us some indication of support, so that's a good indication for us. So we have a timeline before end of this year, we should conclude the consultation. We only have October, November and December and two months.
It's no shame asking for help because we have, the committee also asks for help. So if, because we consider that is, the committee consider that regional inquiries is very important, we need to go out. But because we don't have funding, we seek help from UNDP. But I think you guys should seek help too because this is a very important piece of legislation that other, other sectors also depend on that legislation.
You're right.
Yeah, other sectors also depend on that legislation. So I think you should do the legislation quickly. Can you give a timeframe on when you should complete the, sorry, regional consultation?
Our work plan is.
I mean, your work plan.
Yeah, work plan, this month, October, up until December. Right now, we are still talking to UNDP to support with the funding. We have a budget that is put in place and we just wanted that level of funding. The plan now is whatever little we have, we may start with one or two and wait for external support. So that is the plan. But alternate is that this is comprised of multiple government stakeholders. We are also requesting if other agencies can also chip in for this consultation.
Yes, NICTA is here, Office of Censorship is here, NBC is here. We can bring the police here too. And what's his name? Dataco, Telecom, DCL, they should be able to help to fund that regional. Because they need the access to right to information. That right to information will be distributed on their network. So, NICTA, please, can you help? Can you help DICT to have that consultation, a regional consultation? Can you talk to your operators? Can you remove the funding from UAS and fund this operation? This is a very important regional consultation. Universal Access Scheme funds, can it be used to assist DICT? Give him the one of my.
We'll be very happy to collaborate, we collaborate, so yes, we can. But certainly not the UAS, that's a separate process. But indeed of collaboration, yes, we do that very closely with the department. So yes, we do.
What sort of legislation is protected in that UAS?
We'll explore that. All I'm saying is we welcome the opportunity to extend the aim and collaborate with the department and of course other agencies in conducting the regional consultations, will do. So we can.
The timeframe is, yes, this quarter to do the regional consultation in itself. And we, I'm here pushing for you guys to help. So if you can use your network or relationship to also help DICT, we are in the same industry.
Certainly, we'll support that process. I can assure you that we'll, like I said, we have that collaboration. So yes, I can assure you of our support for that collaboration too. Also on that, maybe just to expand on amendments that good Deputy Secretary has just responded to. Maybe we also collaborating with the department in proposed amendments to the National ICT Act 2009. So the, some of the gaps in the current NICTA as it relates to cyber regulation specific to the telecommunications sector have been addressed. And this will be, because the cyberspace cuts across many sectors. We introducing proposed, introduction of certain provisions that will be very specific to the conduct of ICT licenses in terms of cybersecurity. So that conversation is happening, drafting has been completed. And I think we are at the stage of seeking the state solicitor's certificate of necessity to before coming to the process. Just to head, just to add on to the Deputy Secretary's intervention.
Okay, that's very good because Department of ICT is the policy arm of the industry. So any legislation and all this will be getting the updates from the Department of ICT. All right, we are keeping a register of all the policies and legislation that Department of ICT is working on. So we will be tracking those. So one of the, one of the act that we are tracking and journalists, all our journalists and the media faculty expecting is the right to information. It's a very, this is a very important act that all the media. Because this media inquiry into standards and integrity of journalism and they raised a complaint or they raised the issue that they don't have access to information. And we have section 51 and section 46 of the constitution specify that the citizens should have access and rights to freedom of information expressed and right to information. Now, this is being held back because we don't have a legislation to write the right to information. And Department of ICT is working on this very important piece of legislation. And held back is the regional consultation. Department of ICT needs funding to do regional consultation. And if we cannot get it from the department, other players in the industry should assist and chip in and help Department of ICT to conduct that regional consultation so that we can have the right, access to, or access to information bill presented. I think I made it clear, so that should be, that's the reason why I'm pushing for you guys to help DICT to get the regional consultation done so that that bill can come to the Parliament. Thank you. I think from my end, why I want to bring the DICT on to this inquiry is specifically to ask on that question related to policies and legislation. But from my committee members, if you have other questions from the reasons you want to ask for ICT perspective. Guelala, member for governor? No, I can continue. Okay, just one question and I think that will be, that will be informative to our social media influencers and our social media content creators. Can you give an update on what NICTA or our ICT department is doing in terms of monetization of the Facebook, YouTube? These are, these were some of the questions that I've been trying to ask. I don't have answers for it, so maybe you should have some answers. Are we close to monetize Facebook and YouTube? Are we, are we facing some regulations or policy gaps in this? Please, can you explain?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that's a very, very important question because the policies that we are looking at, we are looking at addressing four critical areas and that's to do with economic development, social service delivery, security and governance. So monetizing social, YouTube and all social media is very, very important. It's part of our policy. And under the social media policy framework, it not only tries to safeguard our citizens safe online, but it also point towards social media as a tool to empower our citizens and monetizing is part of that. So this is all part of the social media policy that we will need to strategize on this one. The policy direction is clear for us now, it's up to the department now. What we are working on is emanating from the data governance and data protection policy. There are now working in progress on a specific legislation on data, data protection. So there's going to be, we are in a process of working on the legislation on data protection. Equally important is the privacy. As we go online, the privacy of data and of citizens become very, very important. So those, digital safety. So these particular legislations, we are now working on a concept. I will engage the stakeholders to go into the drafting of this particular legislation. So data is very, very important and that is where monetizing will come in this form. So like I said, at the department, we are trying to put the appropriate, the relevant and appropriate regulatory and legal framework in place. So it can create that environment for these things to happen in the market. But of course, the policy objective, these things must happen. Digital economy must drive. Now, we are mapping out the legislations and the regulations that we need to quickly put in place to create that enabling environment for these things to happen. So social media policy is out, data governance and protection is out. We are now, the digital ID policy has been adopted recently. So these are the critical enablers of a digital economy. So we are now working on a digital ID system, national digital ID system. And it's a functional ID. Basically, enabling citizens' access to services, but of course, enabling, empowering citizens to engage in this kind of content creation. So these are the policies that we are putting in place to create that enabling environment.
Secretary, I'm, okay. So monetization of Facebook depends on the creation of these policies, am I right? Or currently, can they, our content creators in PNC, can they generate revenue from Facebook?
It can happen. I think it's already happening. We are working through to see, putting the policies, the guidelines in place to safeguard. I think cybersecurity is very, very important and digital safety. So those are the frameworks that we want to put in place to promote and encourage these things to happen.
Okay, so there is no Bank of PNC or any, anything blocking them to monetize their Facebook?
Okay, the Bank of Papua New Guinea is part of the, our discussions is also with the Bank of Papua New Guinea, especially in the service pass. And we also, our message to them is very clear, we are moving digital economy. And this is where people are already moving in the direction, monetizing social media. And we need to change the laws, the rules and the regulations to facilitate for that. So within the ICT sector, we are creating those enabling environment. But we are talking to the Bank of Papua New Guinea to also look at their laws in order to facilitate and enable this to come in. Digital economy must happen. But it will need all of our regulatory and legal framework to make that happen.
But ICTs, can they still monetize the Facebook without those laws and regulations in place? Are they, I think they are.
I, we, I think the thing, the thing is that we, if people are already into this, we cannot stop them back. We can assess, we can support, put in place those laws, those rules, those guidelines to support. If people are already moving in that direction, we cannot hold them back.
Okay, so.
We can support, quickly put in place, review the laws that we have. But in the sector, the department is taking care of that. We are already looking at, the policy is there. We're already working on the laws, but we are taking into consideration all this that is happening in the sector. And we're doing this in collaboration with NICTA as well.
Okay, do you, I think, do you have like help desk or something where if they want to source information on the monetization of Facebook or other information, they can call up and ask you guys, you know, some WhatsApp number or email address?
Okay. I'll take note of that because right now, we already have, we only have the Social Media Desk.
Okay.
Social Media Desk, but I'll take note of that if that can be expanded to cater for that as well.
Some content creators, they would like to monetize their, you know, Facebook or YouTube. You know, some content creators, sorry, some content creators, they want to monetize their social media platforms like Facebook or YouTube or, you know, I don't know. So if they need help to monetize their social media platform, can you provide a space for, because this is the growing population now.
Okay.
This is the growing population now and they're doing that. So we should try find a space in your department for them.
All right, thank you for that. I think that is part of plan. What we have coming in November, we have a National ICT Summit and a Tech Week. And that is where we have a program to engage with all our content creators, all SMEs, ICT SMEs. We want to engage with them, to hear from them and see what they're doing. So our information team will be disseminating information on the upcoming National ICT Summit in November. I think it's the last week. It will be a four-day summit. And it will focus on engaging with the academia, the government agencies, private sector, the SMEs, the content creators. We want to bring all these people in through this summit now to understand from them what they are doing and what we can do, what policies, rules, guidelines we can put in place to support them and what assistance or strategies we can develop to making sure that they are getting that support to encourage and promote our digital innovators. So that summit is part of the plan that we have to encourage to move in the direction to digital economy.
Yep, so it's good, you create a space for them, the people working in the digital economy. So they can source information, source help from, from within your department to assist them in that space. Maybe just one, one last question. Yesterday, one participant, one panelist mentioned about National Information Center. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, I think I briefly mentioned about that, the department, yeah, we have the.
Okay, please elaborate more on that.
National Information Center.
Yeah.
And I think last month or previous month, we had a workshop with all government public relations offices, agencies. We called the PROs from all agencies, we had a workshop. It's an awareness on the National Information Center and basically it's to dissemination, dissemination of the government information. And that is where we want to mobilize all government agencies. We have a central point of coordination where we disseminate out all government public information to the citizens. So department is leading this, we've set up a studio. We don't, we're not duplicating the NBC, but this is purely for creating content, government content. We bring in ministers, we bring in members.
Yeah, yeah.
Interview them, we create content and we.
Like government civil right for the previous, government civil right.
That's the idea. And then we work, we are working with NBC, so we create those content, we put it to NBC and wider media, mainstream media to disseminate those information.
Very good.
So that's, that's the approach that we are taking.
Very good, very good. Okay, thank you. Any members to question, or some more questions? I think panel members, thank you for your time this morning until, I think, we have Dr. Mitna. Thank you for your presence, Deputy Police Commissioner. He'll be the next guy. So, but thank you, Yipla. Sinan, I think you've been very good and you answered most of our questions, nearly all of the questions. We also have some timeframes on what feedback, another next inquiry, Yipla Sawaya, Losideblu 2G, Losideblu MO. Losideblo 2G, Losideblo MOU, Provincial Administration, the regional workshop. So that collaboration between the committee and you are the policy implementers and you know, Luipla, Luipla, check on good governance. You guys doing your work or not, kind of stuff. So thank you for your collaboration and thank you for your participation. Thank you so much. We, next, tomorrow will be a meeting, especially in the afternoon, will be on training and development for journalists, journalists, purely on journalists. So it will look good if you guys join too, especially NBC and also censorship office and the ICT too. So we can collaborate, we can come up with some information how we can develop and develop our journalists. And NICTA would be good to sit in, especially in terms of support to that particular sector. I know you are supporting the ICT sector, but media is also part of ICT, the journalism. So if you have more money to throw around, there is a space also for you to throw. Okay, but anyway, thank you so much. Please give them a big round of alpas. Doctor, you, you can take the seat, but committee members, let's, you may finish in cyber or you may go, police and you may go. The ICT and NICTA can sit in and Luipla can go. NICTA, you must sit down because cybercrime. Censorship, yeah, censorship too must sit down. All of, all of you guys will sit down because this is cybercrime. So only NBC, you ask gifts, thank you for. Okay, Commissioner, please take the middle one.
We won't take break if this lunch provided, if you want to have lunch, you can have lunch while we discuss. But we are running against time and it came on time, so you, you may need a little more time, so. Deputy Commissioner, we have a lower question from the regions. Similar, similar questions.
Thank, thank you Deputy Commissioner, Dr. Mitna. I'll, I'll try to consolidate some from various different regions they visited. People raised some questions pertaining to, you know, RPNGC, especially at Kokopo Inquiry, Jiwaka Inquiry and Madang Inquiry. If the questions are similar in nature, then we can just combine and address. One question is, what training program is RPNGC developing for officers on digital forensics and social media evidence collection to address cyberbullying and unverified harmful content as requested by university counselors and trainee journalists to protect you? This is from Divine World University. Dr. Mitna, recently in our government WhatsApp group, someone shared from West New Britain some terrible Facebook video you can't even watch. Today I was trying to play, but luckily the media, I mean, the content was blocked. It was a terrible video. It was like I was just explaining to them, you know, before, in the morning session. A woman was brought like, you know, how they bring the pick. They just tie their, you know, hands and legs in the name of, they keep calling some background noise like sanguma, sanguma, it's all male voice. And only two women brought in, somebody beating them, slashing them and the fire is grown. So I assume, you know, they're trying to kill them or something. I've seen some terrible videos shared in government WhatsApp group. If I'm not mistaken, it was shared by Governor Jufa at the time. A woman was like naked and, you know, tied down like Jesus Christ. And then the middle opened the leg and middle they are putting fire, such a horrific, terrible scenes. But these are on the Facebook, like people can watch, childrens can watch, anybody can watch. Today, for the first time, I'm seeing this particular content was like blocked. Maybe Facebook themselves have taken some action because our guys do not have capacity. They keep talking about some regulatory, you know, things to be done and they are waiting for some accards to be signed and all those things. So this question is also more pertaining to that, how the officers are trained? Because all these contents are out and I forwarded to Police Minister to say, okay, please forward to, because people are demanding actions. So far, we haven't taken any action, especially this violence against women. You know, in the name of sorcery, sanguma, many innocent women are getting killed. I do not want to call the region, but you know, in certain regions, this is happening very frequently. So is, has police department taking any action against, you know, those culprits? Because you have a hardcore evidence of video, the, the man, everybody is there in the video, which you could, you know, definitely identify and, because since we have not taken any action, this incidence or this thing is continuously happening, especially the violence against women in the name of sanguma or sorcery, that's one. Two is, how is RPNGC enhancing partnership with media outlets for timely information sharing during investigations, including protocols to prevent misinformation? This is some from, from provincial police and educators. This is like PPC Robert Bine, you know, in Madang, they, they raised it. This is one more question. And it's the other question from Jiwaka also similar in nature. What strategies is RPNGC implementing to enforce social media regulations against content inciting domestic violence, including collaboration with our department DICT for tracing asaged by police commanders and community leaders? This is again raised by our PPC Jiwaka. How will RPNGC expand rural patrol? Training on media impacts and digital awareness to mitigate cultural erosion and rumors in response to calls for acting station commanders and educators? I'm, I'm trying to summarize questions and then we come to like, you know, compile that this is related to two or three specific questions. In terms of, in Kokopo Inquiry, there was a lawyer, Kubak lawyers, they were asking about this question. What update is RPNGC making to the Cybercrime Act enforcement protocols? Including prosecution support for social media offenses like bullying? As this is proposed by legal experts and C I D officers? And again, how is RPNG, RPNGC fostering alliances with churches and media for community awareness on violent online content, including joint programs to influence youth positively? This is a request from our church leaders, you know, in Kokopo. What digital literacy and artificial intelligence detection training is RPNGC providing to officers to handle these fake news investigations? This is highlighted by our media council, you know, detective surgeons. Just one last leg is in Alatau. It's also talking about cyber, tracing cyber crimes through real ID in social media accounts, including inter-agency coordinations as advocated by PPC in Alatau. How is RPNGC adapting rural and island patrol strategies to address media incited social harms like family breakdowns? This is also from Alatau PPC. The last one, they talked about what joining, joint training initiatives is RPNGC pursuing with the health authorities on media ethics and fake news response, including officer welfare? This is also from Alatau. In general, with the growing use of social media and digital platforms, what specific capacity does the police force have, does the police force have to detect or investigate and prosecute cases of cybercrime? Online fraud or the deliberate spread of misinformation that can incite public unrest? So this is related to more on misinformation. Maybe these things, we can take it as the main questions and, you know, we try to get some clarity on these questions. So the second is how on, in terms of collaboration on, under regulation, how closely is the police force working with NICTA, our censorship office and other agencies, including DICT, to monitor online content that possesses national security or public order risk? And what protocols are in place to respond quickly while respecting our citizens' rights? This I treat it as second question. The third is especially in terms of your capacity and training. Does the police force have a specialized cybercrime or digital investigation unit? And if not, what plans are being developed to build such capacity? Particularly through training and technological partnerships? These are three, I mean summarized as the three major, you know, questions related to, or pertaining to, you know, more of a police operations. Because recently there are a lot of, you know, violent contents, you know, keep appearing in our Facebook, especially mainly Facebook media. And, and with all those video evidence and all those things, we have not seen one serious action where these perpetrators are really punished, arrested. Like initially I was mentioning about this sorcery related, because that is, that was the quite common, you know, incidents which keep appearing. Thank you. Deputy Commissioner, there are three main questions. One is the cybercrime and misinformation. Because of this growing, you know, social media and digital platforms, what specific capacity does the police force have to detect, investigate and prosecute cases of cybercrime, online fraud or the deliberate spread of misinformation which initiates a public unrest? The second was in how your department, you know, have, you know, collaborate with NICTA, censorship office, DICT, you know, to mitigate this public, public risk? And also what protocols are in place to respond quickly while respecting our citizens' rights? And then third one is in terms of capacity and training. Does the police force have a specialized cybercrime or digital investigation unit? And if not, what plans are being developed to build such capacity? Particularly through training and technological partnerships? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. It's quite handful, so I'll, I have prepared for submission. I'll give to the committee after this. But I'll answer, I'll try as much as possible to answer some of the questions. If I do skip some, please answer again. For us, I think the social media has created more challenge for the police. Normally, if there is a crime report, normally we go to the OB. So we know there is a crime at the police station being reported and then it is, it is tasked to various investigators to proceed. Social media, it's quite a challenge. We have, sometimes we have faceless and nameless people posting online expecting us to police and that's, that's, that's a challenge of its own. So citizen journalism, as we call it, it's posed a serious challenge for us. We've attended some, in instances, we've identified the, the complainants. But I think almost seventy percent of the complainants do not come forward to give additional information. Because in a court of law or an information system that it charge people, we would like to see the complainants and the facts. Even though we have, we can have the, we can have photos or clips of the crime committed, but we need information, we need assistance to support, to be tested in a court of law. Social media, like I said, has put considerable strain on us, the police, particularly when it comes to apprehension of these crime and criminals. We have a cybercrime unit up in Seven Mile, it's functional. We have prosecuted successful cases. We have the infrastructure, we have the, one of the biggest challenges is the people trained to address cybercrimes. Cybercrime is, it's fairly new in this country. We've made inroads to address some of the problems posed by cybercrime. But I think we are working closely with NICTA and DICTA as far as my IT people are telling me that we, we are working closely. But this does not involve police alone. It involves collaborative network across all sectors involving in ICT. We only enforce, we can only contribute to policies, but like I said, in, in forums like this, we can, like I said, I prepared the document for them to consider. So then we can collaboratively, and it's a work in progress. Some of this can be reviewed in three, four, five years' time. But for us, I think as a team, it's a, it's a, it's work in progress. But we've done collaboration with NICTA and DICTA in some of the things that we do, particularly in some of the two or three successful cases that went through as far as I know. But yes, we have a cybercrime unit based out of Seven Mile, just opposite Central Police Station and they've done some arrests. And I believe they've gone beyond the court and people are convicted for that. But there's more to do. So we're learning from the experience of the successful, unsuccessful cases and building on from there. Capacity and training, yes, I, we will admit, we just don't have, because we are trained to do the normal staff, not the cyber. We've lately, we've got people in the ICT to be part of us and better in the police force. So we've given out contracts to ICT people to help us in solving some of the cybercrime, cybercrime activities going online. But that's not, like I said, we need to be backed up by policies giving us the, giving us the legal to operate under. We are not, we are not adequately supported by the criminal court to deal with cybercrime activities. So basically some of these acts support, but to make it work, we need a collaborative from all that are involved in the cybercrime space. That's in a nutshell, but I can answer any specific questions that are raised by the members of the committee.
Dr. Mitna, it's like, was there any example of taking police department, taking action? I, I do understand, we can't just rely on video clips or, but there are people with faces, like, you know, human beings all around that video, you know, doing those abominable things, like the terrible killing that, I mean, they're, they're just using knife, cutting a woman, killing. And, and of course, we talk about, you know, we want evidences to prove it in a court of law and all those things. Because if those, I mean, those people need police, you know, inquiry or something, even whether we have some evidences or not, but the thing is like it's happening in some way in the remote parts of Yanga or some, you know, province, somewhere in Madang, you know, when all these things happening. We, we seem to be, are we supposed to be like taking some actions, like police takes action? Whether we prosecute them or we kill them is secondary. But there was no action taken so far because these animals, you know, killing an innocent women, helpless women. And, and they are like just in their mid thirties or forties, all around laughing and smiling about it, sitting relaxed, chewing bhai. I haven't seen them saying chewing bhai, but sitting relaxed because chewing bhai can be specific to certain regions actually. And, and there was no action taken. So if at all there was some action taken, that's a thing which we wanted to know that people then will know that, oh, okay, police will be taking some serious actions and, you know, something bad will happen to them and all those things. Because the issues are unattended, it's, it's keep coming. It's every now and then an innocent woman getting killed in remote parts of Papua New Guinea. That, that's frequently happening. And, and this is where I just want to see some actions, like how the police department going to handle it.
Sir, I will say that some of the things that happen on social media, we are taking action and this investigation takes time. It takes time, so it doesn't happen, we just go, we, in, in some of the case happened, as far as I know, there are investigations continuing. And I won't disclose, I won't disclose which investigation are ongoing in some of the clips that we see. Because like I said, it's going, it's a slow, it's a slow process. But it's not that we are not addressing, we are addressing some of the problems that come to our attention through the PPC, through the division commanders and we're taking action. People will say we are not taking action, but as far as I know, we have taken something. But like I said, it takes time for us to come with a good court file.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Commissioner, I just have only one question. I think this was, this came out of most of our inquiries and it came from some of the officers, including our C I Ds who were also part of the inquiries. I think one of the biggest challenges they face is the capacity issues where the C I Ds lack the, the digital, you know, knowledge, the literacy. I just wanted to gauge your views on going into the future in terms of recruitment and how we set up the cybercrime units in the provinces. Not many provinces have, have that cybercrime unit. So what is the plan of? So what is the plan of RPNGC in terms of setting up those units in the provinces? And especially the recruitment and of course, upskilling of, of the officers, whether the CIDs will take this role or you looking at into the future? We have graduates who come out of Bomanah with that IT skill and knowledge on how they can be involved in the cybercrime unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. For us, I think the immediate action we took is to embed some of the civilians into our component country now, just for the short term, on contract basis, to help us to identify some of this, particularly with ICT. And there, as I speak, there now embedded to us. But in some cases, we create task force, and that's where we seek out to NICTA and DICTA for the advice. We've been doing collaborative work, particularly upskilling ICT, and we've reached out to them for support. For the training, yes. For the next recruitment, it's basically training the recruits, the basic things about how to detect. But the thrill, the real detection and apprehension will come back to the CID. So that will be incorporated into their training as part of the detection, and that'll be out in the provinces. But in the interim, I think for Court of Salon, we're getting people from the cybercrime space to be part of us, three or four. They're now currently working with it. But in some cases that involve policy issues, we, yes, we have reached out to DICTA and NICTA for support, and we've been doing it. And it's a, it's an agreement, I think we've signed agreement with DICTA or NICTA in some of these cases. And like I said, it's work in progress. As things arise, we shape, reshape things what we done. So what actually, what's on the MOU now would be reshaped or shaped after three years, learning from experience. So we're in collaboration with DICTA and NICTA in some of the projects that we do, particularly with our ICT. But for detection of crime and criminals, yes, we've got ICT people to be embedded in part of us. One of the case I received this morning is a classical example. We reached out to legal expert to be part of us. Kate file was complete this morning. I got a court case file, particularly with ICT. I won't disclose names, but it's a high-profile case, and that's how we collaborate. But for our, we'd like to get that back into the investigation branch, so that's where training comes in. We can have the infrastructure, but the training, yes, I would, I would agree that we let the capacity. But we are making inroads to building our own capacity dealing with our ICT. Unless it involves policy issues, we'll reach out back to NICTA and DICTA. But otherwise, it'll be seen as a criminal issue, particularly for those that breach into criminal space. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. The other question I wanted to raise was a, was a concern. Many people out there, including those who are using social media, they're not fully aware of the cybercrime act. In the collaborations, are there any plans on how we can bring this awareness to the general public on the Cybercrime Act and of course, other acts that are related to this and the policy? You know, many users of social media and those that commit the crimes don't even know that they are breaking the law. And so is there any collaboration on how we can bring this awareness to the general population?
For, for us, I think we, we've given the Cybercrime Act to our division commanders for us. But we, I think we have yet to make inroads into reaching out to the general public. But for us, as a department, it's the chain of command. The commission is distributed to the division commanders, to the PPS, it's confined to the police. But I agree, we should, we will take this responsibility to sell this act out. So people can be aware what constitutes a crime when they go outside of the confines of this, what they do.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner, in terms of admissibility in, in court, how far we're going with especially recorded voices and videos, videos or photos? How, how are the courts getting to accept that? Or do we already have acts or provisions in the Cybercrime Act that allows those that can be presented before court to, or to be admissible in court?
I am not aware of a case that is presented before court, but I think for us, I think as, as the criminal proceedings, if we maintain the chain of evidence, and that's why I said, coming back to the complaint, the chain of evidence, if we maintain that, I think it can be accepted by the courts. Like I said, it's failing to us as a country, as law enforcement, even the courts too. They can accept if we maintain, they can, I say they can, but it's up to the judge or the magistrate that is before the bench. But for us, it's maintaining the continuity, the link of the evidence, come lost side, go lost side, so it is not unbroken. So maintaining the core, the chain of evidence is critical in a court of, when giving evidence. So that for us, we try as much as possible, and that's where we encourage people to come report to us, not on social media. Report to us, and as we can maintain that continuity and protect that evidence and present it before a court. Coming to social media, it's diluted by the time it reaches the courts. So, I mean, it, it's up to the courts, I can't dwell on what they do. But for us, as, through the court of law, I'm also liking chain of evidence, how we maintain that. And then we can present what we have according to the complaint. That's why I say, it's important to report any crimes to the police front counter, not on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry, Deputy Commissioner, there's one question related to, you know, when there are a lot of abuse through messages, you know, using mobile phones and all those things. Like in some countries, like within few minutes or hours, they immediately, you know, find out from which phone or from whom that message came. Either they go and detect from the particular tower which sends that message. So even to identify the location, for example, you, I get a threatening message from a particular number. So once we report to police, immediately they're able to identify which source, I mean, which tower actually that message came through, whether it's from that particular digital tower, Vodafone tower, you know, the department has some kind of system linked to these mobile phone operators, you'll be able to identify. Because these are some basic things which the police department really need within the department. So do you have any such partnership program? Because every time, even last time when some very serious threatening message come, we try to approach digital, what they said, sorry, you go and get a court order in order for us to reveal that number and all sorts of things. So we have to go through police and raise it in district court, get a search of court order or something, then they reveal. But the police in, in its own capacity should have some kind of access for identifying this kind of, you know, once we give you that this is a message came from this particular number, then can you please source, you know, who is this person? So do you have any such partnership or some kind of collaboration with these mobile phone service providers whereby you can, you know, trace that person who sent that message and all those things?
Thank you. I think from my memory, the challenge we faced was relating to the Mogolu incident, where we had these kidnappers ransom for money, where they raped, raped young girls up in Mogolu. We faced, we faced considerable challenge in getting, getting information. On average, it will take about two weeks. We need to write back to the minister for communication to give us permission to, so that's the problem we facing, basically in a nutshell.
Is it not practical that you have some kind of, you know, amend some of your act to make sure that you have, I mean, what is the point of getting after two weeks, you know, that after two weeks, that information? But by that two weeks, the culprits would have run away. So you need it within next one hour, next few minutes, where you can quickly, you know, access that information or even access the person who was, you know, doing that information. I mean, the faceless, without any name and all those things, the message coming. So that, I think the police act, I'm sure should allow for you to just, like the CID is going and asking for bank state, I think bank statement, you would need a court order. If we have to wait for a court order, then we might wait for a week or two, you know, follow all the protocols and all those things. Because in a criminal investigation, or especially in a life or death situation, when somebody got kidnapped and all, we can't afford to wait for a week or two to get a court order to go to service, mobile phone service operators to do. I'm, I'm, I'm asking whether you have any other arrangement, you know, in a legislative way or in a normal police, you know, protocol way, where you can actually straight away access the information from digital or Vodafone or telecom or based on whichever number that messages are coming from?
We can, we are, we are making progress with NICTA and DICTA. We cannot change the police act to come connect, because it's come back to telecommunications. So it must evolve from NICTA or DICTA to give us that, that luxury. Police for Salon cannot be amended to cater for telecommunications. But yes, we are working closely for them to give us access instead of the two weeks normal. That's why the anti-terrorist act is part of that change.
Yeah.
I won't dwell on that. But we'd like, as much as possible, we'd like to dock into towers to give us that involvement, but we, we don't have that luxury. Because we are guided by, strictly by law, to go back to the minister for communication to give us access. So, but I think probably this work in progress now with them to give us access, particularly for criminal activities or things that encroach to national security. Other things not so serious, marriage problem, we don't want to know about it. But things that involve national security, we'd like, we, we very much would like to know. But that comes back to the two authorities that can, I mean, they have to give us that.
I think this is where the gap is, like, you know, you can't really depend on NICTA, you know, for them to go and, I, I can't understand really going and seeking permission from ICT minister to give or what, I, I don't know what role minister has to play in this one to, you know, allow dissemination of information. This must be within the departmental heads, like, you know, you are a public servant, NICTA CEO is a public servant, one phone call, you know, you should get that information within next five minutes, unless it is prohibited by law not to reveal or something. This is where I'm asking, is there, you know, specific law where you need to amend under NICTA or you? Because this is life or death matter, when, you know, so many people been kidnapped and, you know, locked in and all these things, we need to save those lives. So we can't afford to wait for two weeks, you know, for minister to write back or clear and all those things. So I, I, I think blindly put it, one phone call away, you should get that information or the system should give you access also to, you know, whatever the NICTA has, especially because you are responsible for the country's security and all. NICTA is just a regulatory authority for communication and all those things. So you need to monitor also, I mean, in other countries, they are even monitoring everybody's phone call. If there is a word about, you know, they intend to do bad things, everything is, you know, picked up, like our next door neighbor has, like you have so much support from Australia in terms of, you know, police funding. So this is one area where we should really tell them, please equip us in terms of, you know, technology, especially to identify, you know, this kind of criminals, you know, hiding, using some mobile phone numbers registered under somebody's name and all those things. So I think that's where we need to equip ourselves, because right now, we are no way on par with any other, you know, country, no way we can compare ourselves with Australia. But since this Australian government being very keen and interested, you know, in partnership programs and supporting, this is one area where they should really support. Because for them, within few minutes, they can easily identify where the guy is hiding, you know, where exactly, you know, they are sitting and sending these messages, and they can go and arrest them. Whereas we do not have that kind of capacity and, that, that's the thing, I mean, we might dwell on this one for long, but the idea is how police force can be empowered with this information, you know, without having to go through these so-called protocols and regulatory, you know, principles of NICTA or any other procedures.
If I can add on to what governor said, you are just, you are exactly, you remember the 2000 million robbery on the PSP bank?
That's exactly what, what happened. The then Pengtail at the time, they, when they noticed that the chopper was being diverted on its way to Rego somewhere, and on the way back, they alerted the police, and that's how police reacted so quickly, out of all the protocols, to get the, get the million robbery guys down. So I thought, governor, that was, that was a good one that I thought to add on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think I, I agree, I concur with your, with your comments. I think we are work in progress, but we need to speed up. I think after this, we'll work closely, we'll see the legal implication, what it implies. Because we are mindful, particularly the courts, they need to be involved in this conversation too. Because we can dock illegally, illegally this conversation, but when it, when it's, when it's brought to the be of the court of law, it's the inadmissible of the evidence. So these are legal loopholes, but I agree with you. And from my own experience, like I said, the Mogolu experience, it took almost two weeks to get these phone numbers and people. But like I said, it's working progress, I think after this conversation, and I think this work in progress, but we will, I will make sure that I work closely with NICTA and DICTA to prosecute some of these things, particularly to, to, to trace numbers, it's becoming an issue, I think, complaint for, I think, right across the country. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, committee members. I have got a couple of questions. But firstly, maybe to, it's good that all of you guys are sitting now. So firstly, to the secretary for ICT, the deputy secretary for ICT, you mentioned you created, you guys created E-Direct Trade. That E-Direct Trade consists of, does it consist of police too? Cybercrime unit of police or? Which, which people are consisting this E-Direct?
The E-Safety, National E-Safety Direct Trade, that's the department.
E-Safety Direct Trade, yeah.
NICTA, police.
Uh huh.
I think censorship.
Censorship?
And let me, these are the core members of the National E-Safety Direct Trade.
Okay, NICTA, police.
Censorship and.
Okay, good.
The department.
Okay, so Mr., Dr. Mitna, you are aware of the E-Safety Direct Trade, existence of the Direct Trade? So what does the E-Direct Trade do? I just recently created, so what's the terms of reference or main objective of the E-Safety Direct Trade?
The, the main primary responsibility of the E-Safety Direct Trade is basically to look at what technical measures, guidelines, rules, procedures, processes that needs to be strengthened to make the, making sure that our online safety is guaranteed. And if there are any issues relating to that, that has to be dealt with swiftly. So that's, that's the main responsibility of this E-Safety Direct Trade. And then very important is to making sure that there is collaboration between all these parties.
Yes, that's important about collaboration.
Platform that allows all these parties to act swiftly if something happens. So that's, that's, I think it's a coordination platform.
Okay. We can, we can say a coordination platform between different, so coordination also for legislation and policies?
It's part of that, for them to identify the gaps between in the legislation, regulatory framework, rules and the guidelines that are needed to making sure that respective agencies or entities are empowered to do their work more effectively. And more importantly, that, that level of collaboration must happen between these agencies when the need arises.
Okay, the amendment that is going on for Cybercrime Act 2026, who's, who's, which person, 2016, sorry, 2016, who's, who's responsible to do those amendments? Or is it been taken or someone doing the working on the amendments? Or who's responsible for that? Which department, police or?
The work of the legislation or drafting of the legislation and review is the responsibility of Department of Justice and Attorney General, as well as the Constitutional Review and Amendments Committee. But the respective agencies will have to alert them to the need for such review to happen, and they facilitate the process.
So is, is there any alert to them already on cybercrime police, Dr. Mitna, have you alerted? Are you aware of this amendment going on for the 2000 amendment for Cybercrime 2016 Act? Have you guys submit your, make your? Okay, so you mentioned something about court alignment of evidence with court and all this, is it captured there?
It's captured in the.
In that, in that amendment? So if the amendment goes through, then you'd be able to use the video on Facebook to prosecute?
Yes.
Okay. This, 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 this is a concern that we, we see crime on Facebook. Now, different social media platform, but let's say Facebook. We see crime on Facebook, crime committed live on Facebook. But there is no report, who, who, who's supposed to report that? Because it's, it's on Facebook, it's on video, on Facebook, so who's supposed to report that crime? Should any, any person, any like, like a social media, like my account, if I go and see that, should I report that crime or who's supposed to report that crime committed on Facebook?
Any person aggrieved by the crime, so long as we have your name, your contact details and your statement, and we can backtrack. So because in an information paper in a court of law, we'd like the informant to, like I said, the continuity of evidence. So we need somebody to report formally.
Okay, so, so like, governor? Okay, so, so like Governor, Governor saw that content on Facebook. Can, can he complain?
Yes.
He can like.
Complain and do a statement.
Do a statement, that he, on the date, he saw that, he was on his mobile phone and he saw that video.
And then we'd like those who are aggrieved to be part of it so that we maintain coercive defense.
The victims?
Victims, if we can find them or those relatives of the victims, they can support evidence, because we need corroborative evidence to present before the court of law. Our concern is the court of law, we can do arrests, but we'd like to do a conviction that is complete and that is tight, you know, solid to be presented before the court. We want conviction after every crime, not just arresting, because this out based on social media, so we're doing arrests. But at the end, we want to take a conviction and with the evidence, string of evidence and tight case to be presented.
So, so, so if Governor, Governor wants to raise this complaint, then he has to have the collaborating evidence up for those people who participate in that act or saw that act taking place, they can also.
Collectively support.
Support.
To the police station, nearest police station and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Okay, so if I, if we see a video of someone holding firearms, that, that's, we can, anybody can raise the complaint as long as there's a collaborative evidence.
Yes.
To support that, okay, so I mean, there's, the law is.
Evidence there.
Yeah.
All we need is people to report the.
Report?
To report the incident to the police, nearest police station and we take it from there, not on social media.
Not on social media, but the evidence can be from social media?
Social media, but we'd like to see those who recorded, so like I said, we maintain that string of evidence, photo taken and then maintain that.
So photo can be taken by anyone?
Anyone can report to the police, the nearest police station.
The, the person who take the photo?
Any aggrieved person.
Any aggrieved person?
So it's up to the investors to maintain the evidence, follow up, backtrack to whoever that is committing a crime and go on arrest.
I think we should, we should test that, test that, test that particular option or that law, because we, we saw, we saw people waving guns on Facebook and doing those aggressive horrible things on Facebook and all this, but we have not laid a complaint. A person not, not at the, not at the side, like, he's from West New Britain and this, this crime is committed in Enga or in, in Juwaka or in Morobe, so he's watching it in Kimbe. So can a person from Kimbe lay a complaint?
He's aggrieved, so like I said, it's some cybercrime, the, the social media problem is something fairly new in this country. Let's test down chat at waters and see where you go.
I mean, I think that will be a good, good thing for us to test that cybercrime and.
Up to the courts to see and then we can take the cue from there and build up our defenses or.
Or improve the legislations.
Improve the legislation, so we take it from there, so reporting, it can be from a different jurisdiction reporting. It's hard, it's up to the arresting officer to just maintaining that chain of evidence, arrest, go back for the courts. Whatever happens, we can always look back and revise existing legislation, law, the ways of reporting and we can do that. Like I said, it's failing in something, social media has put a considerable challenge on us.
Yeah.
So it's about testing new waters.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, I think if the audience and if, if people are watching on live on TV, or live on this one, if, so there's, there's, we already have some platform. If we feel aggrieved, if a crime is committing, committed in, in Manus, but you in Portmose, we feel aggrieved, you can always lay complaint to the police, but as long as you support with corroborating evidence, then we'll see if we can process this. That would be a good, to test our Cybercrime Act, test our Criminal Court and test our court system and see if it works. Otherwise, we have to modify or change our laws and.
Based on the experiences we face, so for rivers and every three five, as like I said.
So Governor, you want to contribute in this?
Thank you, thank you. I, I think we are dwelling on this long, but here the Deputy Commissioner's point is, when it goes to the court, the case is more likely to be thrown out without having, you know, proper evidences and proof and all those things. The only evidence I have seen it, I've seen on the video clearly, the innocent women being tortured and killed. And this is live, not live, I mean, in the video, that means somebody is capturing the video. Somebody even have the guts to put that one in a Facebook. So the first person of inquiry should be the person who posted that particular, you know, video. Because he's, someone is boasting about killing two women, you know, who suspected to be, you know, involved in sorcery and all those things. So I feel like in the national interest, the police department should itself, you know, should take those matters and, you know, I can complain, no problem, because I'm sitting in the comfort of my provincial capital Kimbe, because no one is going to come and, you know, attack me in Kimbe or in Portmoseby, but there is no one, you meant, you, you mentioned that the aggrieved persons, the relatives of that, you know, those innocent women, you know, also to collaborate or, you know, come together, so we complain. So that all the interested parties are coming in as one, so and we raise complaint. But maybe in that particular village, nobody will come forward to report. In that case, what will happen like, because all got the man by poraidlo, kamna, toktoklo, police lo, because they have to live in that village and survive, because they lost two women, the relatives of that women are keep, going to keep quiet, because they might be subject to the same torture, same killing. In that case, no one is going to come forward, as a civilized society, after watching these things, will we do anything about it or it's okay, we will wait for complaint to come? Let the complaint come, then we will address it, that's the main concern. So that, that so-called, that man, that animals, you know, causing these, is, is like, you know, they, they are not hiding. They're just showing their face, you know, talking about Sanguma, keep, the word Sanguma is keep coming out. So they, they, they keep going unpunished, like, you know, they, they are like above the law, they have no one to. Of, of course, the country is so big and, you know, remote, where we do not have all the resources to reach out. But I'm sure where they have taken video, they able to put, you know, video on the Facebook, that means they are living somewhere, they have some network. So they're able to access, you know, Facebook and all those things. So this is where the common interest should come, that police without complaint, this matter has to be, you know, referred to a particular police station in Enga or Medang, wherever that the incident taking place, and they have to take a special attention to address this issue. Especially the women, you know, innocent women being killed in the name of sorcery and all those things. Of course, it's, it's an emotional thing, because we saw that video, we get, you know, hurt and so many of our citizens blast us, what you guys are doing about it and, you know, your leaders are keep talking and all those things. So that's where we need to, the police need to give that comfort, because you are the first line of protection for any citizen. You do not, in certain cases, you do not need complaint, because you saw that video, we forward that video, I can write a complaint, no issue. But like you said, whether we can really go through the full case, like we arrest and then charge them in the court and, you know, really getting the punishment or not, what if they get released by the court because of lack of, or that inadmissible, you know, evidence of just Facebook link, I'm giving it to them? Like last one week, it was there in the, in the media, just today I was trying to open up, then I can see that this content was blocked by the Facebook media themselves, because it's such a horrible video where it's showing a woman is like, you know. And also it's the reputational damage, you know, in the international arena, that, you know, this is causing, like, people are going to assume this is how the entire Papua New Guinea and all those things. That's why I thought the common interest prevail and police, like, without, without complaint, have to, you know, send a team to investigate.
I think from what I, what, from the normal practice we do, when you have this, almost every day it's sent to us, the Commission, I mean, through the social media, particularly WhatsApp, we refer it back to Division Commander, to his PPC to find out, and that's what, that's what we do. So we don't turn up on this, some, some of these things, in his crimes committed and posted on social media, we refer it back to the divisions and to the provinces, so it's for the PPC and his officers to investigate. I think that's, that's the conference we do, so we, we take action. For us, it's referring back to the divisions and through the PPCs to find the source and make arrests where possible. Some of the things posted on social media are faceless, they come up with, we've tracked people. I would say to the committee, we've got the technology to track people on Facebook, but some, some of them are not leaving up to the dead name. So there are investigations ongoing currently behind the scenes, we don't come openly to the media talk. There are some invasion we've done with support from NICTA and DICTA that's progressing. But some things we like to maintain, because the national secret wrapped around this issue, but. Of course, some of things like the normal practice we do, we refer back to Division Commanders for the PPCs to deal with.
Okay, I think that's, because it's, it's become a, become a national concern, it's affecting us, that, that sort of content going out. So I, I'm, I'm thinking, this, this complaint, because the evidence is on the video is, that's the evidence, picture, mm, mm, evidence, a picture, mm, evidence, nah, display, evidence. So the Cybercrime Act, can it be modified to, or enable you guys to use those evidence or to investigate, start investigation?
Yes, we have the evidence there, it's now the work of the investigator to link the evidence to the perpetrator.
Yes, okay.
Evidence is overwhelming, it's recorded, shown on social media, but it's now to link that, whoever that is committing the crime, so, link back to the perpetrator and now, that's the work of the investigator, that's something we do, under the Criminal Code.
Okay, good, very good. All right, now, now the thought came, because we have, you have the Criminal Court and we have the Cybercrime Act. So cybercrime is just part of a legislation that you enforce law? It's one of the legislation, you have several legislations to implement the enforced law, am I thinking it right?
Yes, cybercrime should be complementing the Criminal Code, they should be reading each other.
Okay.
Criminal Code is there, but sometimes we are tied by the Criminal Code. For example, we cannot dock of communications, like I said, two weeks to get information, we are, we are strictly bounded. Inadmissible, the court will ask him, how he seems to have evidence, or I made a phone call, that's illegal, the lawyers, smart lawyers are there. So that's why the inability of this type of information, so that's why the cybercrime should be complementing.
This is the video, they're carrying women like a pig and trying to put it on the fire. It was blocked, but then it also gives option, if you are above eighteen or, you know, you dare to watch, okay, you can click, so. Didn't, if I put the volume, then you can hear the words. Sanguma, Lee City, all these things I can hear.
That's, that's evidence of a crime that's committed, but for us now, it's to backtrack to whoever the perpetrator is. Evidence and stuff, so it's the work of, but cybercrime.
Report go lo, PPC blow Lee.
Lee nah, and then the trial will find him out, so it all still land walking, and then that's the evidence, we have that. Where it will be accepted by the court is a different ballgame, but we go to provide everything for the courts to decide. But for the cybercrime, set them by complementing Criminal Code, because we, this will be taken as a criminal offense.
So who tracks that, this sort of instance, who tracks it? Who was, like, this one evidence, once instance of a crime on, published on social media? There are several other crimes published on social media, so who, who track, because there will be no complaint, who tracks those crime? Who throws those instances of crime? You give, you give a sample line, but tracking, tracing, or some recording, or some?
Investigator, basically investigator for us, police investigator.
Yeah, but I'm more about provinces, but at, at the national level, maybe at the e-safety direct rate, can we, if some sort of tracking at the e-safety direct rates or that crime is reported there, you think?
When it's a crime, it's reported to the police, so when you need expert advice, nah, we can come back to the expert, particularly with ICT. But otherwise, we treat this as a criminal offense. For supporting us to get the, on a mail or cybercrime, when it relates to cyber, social media concern, we'll come back to cybercrime. Otherwise, it's criminal nature.
Okay, so.
So we deal according to the Criminal Code.
Okay, so.
But to facilitate, nah, finding more, nah, when you have obstacles, lie identify more on social media, we come back to the people.
Okay, that, that crime will be, that, that, that particular instance, and by also, it's said now, it's currently said on social media, so, somebody has to, somebody has to get it and record it.
Yes.
Somebody has to get it and record it, so who will be that person to get it and record it? Who, who's the section? Will it be the police, will it be NICTA, will it be censorship, will it be DICT? Who will get that crime? Now, that, that video is being said now, it's a crime committed and said now on social media platform. Who will be the one to record that?
Police can, because it's criminal, police can record, but we will need people to come to us.
And people walking investigation or go find him, yeah?
Yeah.
So you record him, no, walking investigation, so you would be having a record of, so you would be recording that?
Recording and we want people to come, not talking, because we'd like.
Why, why are you asking what people will come, because you looking what, record the video stuff, yeah?
Because at the end, we want people who are committing these crimes.
You will do investigation, because their faces are shown now, their location is shown, so you will do investigation to.
That will be a loose hand, what we call a loose hand investigation, because it's chaotic here, we, we just.
How, how can it be chaotic, because their faces are shown? You, you look at video and you look at face long only?
Origin become lower now, so middle of Spain, come lower my province, that's why we talk here, we give it back to Division Commanders, now go back to PPCs, not by finding out.
Yes.
Because this thing can come from anywhere, but we need to, the origin of the video, and come lower my abstract.
When it's posted on the social.
Social media, so we try to locate where it is, so go back, go back or go back to PPC, that's what I said, go back to PPC or line blend or, finding workout now, so we can take that on board.
Okay, so that, that's, that's my, our, the committee concern is that, that, the evidence of crime is now shown on social media platform?
Yes.
Okay, we need the agency of state to rock, record that evidence and for the police to pursue that evidence. So the agency of state is, will be the police to, now will be the police, so any platform now come low, social media now plus also, I'm police simpiness? Or?
Yes.
Can we, can we, can we?
We can assume, assume that.
That will be assumed, but then it's with some sort of way where the public can know that, that, that particular crime that is being displayed on social media, it's now being recorded and it's taken, it's also being addressed by the police, you think? Now we're people, we, we don't know whether that crime is being addressed by the police or not, but there should be some sort of information when we, we come to e-direct, e-safety direct rate or some sort of center for information or some sort of information that the public can come and be assured that that crime is recorded and it will be investigated and, you know, can we, can we have some collaboration from you guys?
I come back to my, some first and we okay, yeah, we okay, yeah, me talk. Reporting on social media is one, but it needs to be reported at the station, documenting. That we go to get it straight, come low, police, we will take on board, I, I will guarantee, we will take that very seriously. If only it's reported at the police station, that we, and then by taking. Social media like I said, it's very, we can't tell, I'm below my province, until during downstream, to fast track. We, we encourage everybody, every crime must be reported, but at the police, nearest police station, we will take it from there. I guarantee you, most of the crimes that we've taken on board, but some on social media, because it's social media, we're waiting for, kind of, of course, it's on social media, but, go to the nearest police station, forget the Facebook button, call a police station, report him and then we take from there. Later you can put in the social media, I mean, that's my apple to the public, whoever that is aggrieved by anything.
Okay.
I have, I have, as Deputy Commissioner now, I have yet to receive the brief on this one, there's none on my table.
Okay, Deputy Commissioner, we, we also, we, both of us, we, we, we also agree by this issue. So we, we, we want to establish a good process that, that crime can be, ever go through the process for the police. So can, can you say that your cybercrime unit at Seven Mile, can it be a location where any public, any public can report any crime they saw on Facebook to that particular location?
Yes.
Seven Mile, so there's evidence that this record been taking place?
We've, I think we've got cybercrimes across the country, but main centers, but like I said, we're building up, scaling, fairly new. So eventually in the main regions, we'll have our cybercrimes fully up and running. We've got YC step, but now adequately supported, but yes, in the province, in the, in the centers, Rabaul, Lee, Hagen, we'll set up. Seven Mile is for NCD Central, eventually we'll branch out, that's the plan going forward. So reporting can some of seven mile, now we take it from there, it's the first point of reporting, it can be anywhere in the country, but the nearest, and then we'll take it from there, it comes to the police, government of police, now we'll take from there.
Okay, okay, good, that, that, that's, that's, that's that, that's that. But what if that crime is not reported at that location? Nah, online or narba will find out some this like crime committed. Now, online or narba will find out some this like crime committed. So all can, all but report the station blow?
Reporting the station blow, come now, as long as it's reported, we will progress, we will make attempt to progress, it's a crime.
Okay, so instead of coming to us, politician, politician, they can go to the public, police station and?
Exactly, exactly.
Any politician can go to the police station and report that particular crime?
Politician.
Politician, anybody?
Anybody, come to police station and report it, we take it from there. And that's where we progress, almost everything that is done since in the finance, law, police station there. And in my first statement, the social media now I'm putting blow big, so like I said, it's a collaborative for us all to work together. It's a new emerging sort of reporting platform. So we are bombarded by the OB reporting now, social media, so now from time, I get WhatsApp from people to crime or some, so I don't, I don't know whether I'll be reporting to this one or to my official commanders. But anyway, for, reporting my next person, we take it from there, I guarantee you, my cybercrime also will take it from there, any crime. Let's see social media pastor, I mean, for those that are reporting, but yes, the evidence presented before court. And now people vaccine the trail and go back over, over the perpetrators. Now the biggest issue for the courts, we don't accept no one, but so long as we make, we will make arrest.
Okay, your OB, your person where daily complaint, can you electronize it, or are you in the process of electronizing it?
Seventy-five percent.
That will be, that will give chance for people not to visit the station, they can just report it.
We worked in partnership with DICT, we're seventy-five percent through the reporting system now, it's.
You work in progress with who? Collaborate with who?
With the policy aspect, I'm going to meet them, but for us as a department, yes, we've done seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent, internal reporting OB, Borco is func- func- functional now. Any crime reported Borco Police Station, it's a layer of access, we can access from it course.
Okay, why, why can't we do the same for E-Safety Direct Trade? Can, can we report those such crimes like that on?
It can be nowadays, now it's an NCD send that came out, we will work to progress that.
Okay, okay, now you take the cue now. Because, because of those crimes, we have to, have some sort of platform to report. Yes, have some platform to report, so that, that particular E-Safety Direct Trade should take the cue from that and help police instead?
In fact, we, we've already started that through the social media desk. And Police Cybercrime Unit is part of the social media desk added by Inspector Thotti. So what we do is, when the citizens post the information or any pictures, the technical team verify, they assess, making sure that this is genuine. Once we verify that, then we push it to Cybercrime Unit for their process, investigation and prosecution. So that, that's, that's the process that we are following.
Okay, that video that governor is sharing, have you, has that been reached, had reached you?
That I will have to check with our social media desk.
So how do we forward those videos to the social media team? What sort of? How, how do we reach them? How do the public citizens reach the social media desk?
Social media desk, I think it's the DICT Social Media Desk. That's the, that's the website or WhatsApp, through the WhatsApp group. We need to do a lot of awareness on this one too, that's another thing that I challenge on our part that, at the venues for receiving complaints, I think we have to play our part by creating awareness on people coming to register, so, I think there's something that I take note of that we need to.
We, we have a system in place, it's just the public is not aware of. So whose, whose responsibility is to make the public aware of those system in place? NBC, who is NBC? NBC, they all come to you, no one, low broadcast, no one, people. Or they are keeping to themselves, creating a good policy, keeping in the desk and writing on, whatever, printing good through colorful and they keeping there. When will the public know of this process?
Chair, I think we will take on the, we will take on the, to, to tell the public. If you are agreed by anything, we will channel them to the appropriate agency before it comes to the police, so we're working collaboratively, it's just outreach.
You are working with yourself, but not with the public?
That's, that's my point. So we will take that which will to sell that, the social, social media on a, platform, to reach out. So we will take that responsibility, the police will do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's policy, you have to, you have to do it, and you have NBC?
Yep.
You have National Information Center? You have E-Safety Direct Trade? You guys already established, it's just that this governor will not feel aggrieved is, if he knows that there is a place for him to report that incident. Now I'm coming, people all got across nothing, because we, we think, people government, you know, creating one of the system, or reporting all this like incidents stuff. But we already have a system and a process in, in place to handle such cases. It's just that we are not aware that there's, there exists a system and process. So please, I'm now, I'm next inquiry, I'm all got a popular name, we have to report those incidents. Can I, can I get an assurance for police to make an awareness, not only on that one, but also on cybercrime?
We will, we will take that responsibility, I assure the committee, chair and the committee, thank you.
Chair, can I do intervention here? Just that from the discussions, we've identified that it's a lack of awareness to the public. So I call on all our agencies who are here, I mean, that are present this afternoon to, take a quick action, call for action quickly, put our resources together and, find ways and means how we can do awareness using all forms of, platforms to do, the models to do awareness to reach our people. I think that's the call that we can take from here.
Yes, I think the first awareness you, you can come and do is, do it on TV, video, one platform you, I think, I think that should be, I think it's, it's just that we have a, we have a process and system in place to handle such incidents and crimes caused on social media. It's just that the public doesn't know how to report it. The process to get reported and get, you know, complaint raised and then follow up and track and all these things. This, this, this information is stop normally, you know, stop what they may blow public. So that's why you become the, I mean, you become complaint, but that process is exist. Please, we, you collaborate. I think it's really good to see E-Safety Direct Trade is in place. So that's, I think you should bring DJ on board also. DJ on board on the E-Direct, E-Safety Direct Trade. They're part of it, yeah, so that coding and all this, I can work on them now. Because now we are, we are in a, we already in a time where you will not be territorial, you have to work with each other. You, you, you have to work with each other, you have, you know, police, police, police act, NICTA, NICTA act, this like I think, you know, pass them. So now you have to work with collaborative, where you can see work to across, because the, the, the times we are in is, requires us to work together. So that's why the, you guys create the E-Safety Direct Trade, and please use that platform to work. Governor, you have any?
Just last one, we are dwelling on this one too much.
It's, it's important, we can dwell, dwell a day or two on this one.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Deputy Commissioner, the, the main bottom line. We really want police department to be equipped with this one, because our concern is there are too many agencies you need to rely on, depend on. So you will be then saying, okay, I got this one, I gave it to this DICT or this EV cyber directory or what, I'll give it to them and I wait for them to do. I feel that this desk, not exactly the same as DICT is doing, but within the police force, within their cybercrime, they have to have that capacity for immediate. For example, this post was posted by someone called Kunai Banter. I thought like is an individual, but it's just a name, like, you know, Kunai Banter is like some kind of organization name. And they have like, you know, some thousands of followers, you know, in that group. There are many other good videos there, some jokes and this and that, but this particular video is, you know, posting, and maybe they are trying to say, okay, this is like, so the first point of contact is this Kunai Banter, where exactly they got that video to be, you know, really posted? I do not have a video, I only have a link, then I go and access that, you know, through their reels, it was in Facebook reels, watch that one. So the idea is, get police force empowered with all these facilities. Even this so-called social media desk, you know, the deputy secretary talking about, it's just a desk created within the Department of, you know, Information and Communication Technology. But they are not like, it's like a police agency where people can go and, you know, complain to them and all those things. He's still talking about whether we create a WhatsApp group or we create something. Chairman, the point we need to understand is, there is no immediate place for public to really go and, you know, report. So the citizens are desperate, so they only know us on the ground. So there was, you know, young citizen in West New Britain say, hey, post this one and, you know, asked me, questioning or challenging me to talk about these things in parliament, or what are we doing about it as leaders? Of course, it's not happening in West New Britain, but doesn't matter which part of Papua New Guinea it is happening, but it is happening within PNG. So we all have the right to, you know, coast in this animalistic behavior and all those kind of things, so. We want police department to be empowered, so in what way? DICT can go in, buy their equipments, whatever, you know, whether with our development partners to buy, these are after all some equipments which we can buy, but in terms of technology, how we can establish within the police department? So I can go and maybe in that Seven Mile, Seven Mile which you talk about, it's only a branch for NCD. But police headquarters have to have like, you know, as big as this room with hundred computers, which is tracking or doing something, where you have that capacity rather than going and waiting for DICT or NICT or someone to really, you know, access and then give, because you are the one going to take action. The NICTA do not have the prosecution powers and, maybe they have it, you know, under, with the operators and all, but I'm talking about the criminals, you know, doing all these things. So our aim is to see how the police department can be empowered with all these technologies. How does DICT have all those technology to access, you know, all those information and to tell you after a week or something that this is what, you know, all this happening? So how we can reduce that time of, you know, a week or two? But you can immediately access, you know, it's a matter of urgency, because these are life and death matters, so we want to access it quickly. So you can take some action and all, so we are not pinpointing everything to you, but our aim is to see how, because in many other countries, it is how that operates in police department. In India and all, within few minutes, they will track the culprit, where exactly the, they don't go, they don't have to really go out of their office and do it. They have the system which is interlinked, connected and all those things, so. That is what we are worried about, why our police do not have such capacity? So can DICT import that knowledge to them or give all those equipments or something, or set up a desk where you can sit from that particular desk or you have your own offices to access? Maybe they can work in collaboration with this department, but you have that facility, you have that access where you can have a first-hand information and take some action, because, I mean, we have too many laws, too many departments, you know, too many dependency on different, different, so all these things, so that's why we need to combine and police force have to have a full power to, like you talk about that Counter Terrorism Act, which gives you wider power to go in and, you know, in the name of national security. Likewise, this is also like, more like a domestic terrorism, killing our own people and all those things, so who gave them the right to kill the innocent women in the name of Sanguma? Minusay, why all no killing all man? All minusay, Sanguma am profession blow merit as well, man you know savely Sanguma, I mean no clear. So, but most, ninety-nine percent of it so far, I haven't seen any man killed in the name of Sanguma. We heard about one or two incidences about men doing, but mostly women being killed in the name of this Sanguma. So this is one terrible thing happening in our country very frequently. And it's also, you know, if I can see it, I'm sure anyone else in the world also can see it. So that will put us in a terrible picture, so I think this, we, because we have to treat that mother as one of our own relative or someone, what if it happens to someone, you know, related to us in the remote village, because nobody to coast in these people who are doing all these criminal activities, so. I think that is where the inquiry is going to, like, how we can empower the police?
Governor, governor, governor has a very, very important point, and I think, before you answer, we plus are watching, we watch a lot of TV and movies now, I know some, when we see police, they can trace mobile phone calls. And they, they can, you know, all do, do, do those stuff. The police in, in Australia, in America, they can do that. When we have them visiting this country, and what are they doing to the police force? Why can't they bring their technology to the police force, our, our police force? Or are we refusing to accept their help? You can, you can trace phone calls, I mean, the police, you need, a police can trace, trace a phone call and, when, when a phone call is on, they can trace it, are you able to trace phone call within your police, please? Oh, please, you.
We have, we, we have the capacity to trace calls.
Trace calls?
That I can tell the committee we have the capacity. But anything that encroaches on national security, we take action, that I can assure you, we have that capacity, thank you.
All right, what about mobile phone as text messages? Mobile phone, text, reporting text message here?
We have the capacity.
Okay, so governor, you, but you say it takes two weeks to?
That's for, basically we're going to a private service provider to get information from that, but we'd like that information to present in a court of law.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the crutch is.
Okay, now I see it, so you can, you can do this, but you cannot present it to court, because?
No, we want to make a change, and the court of law, the admissibility of evidence.
Okay.
The legal process in obtaining that, that's what the crutch.
Okay, all right, good.
But we've learned from experience, now, like I said, we're working closely to, to, to at least, we won't get there, but we will, we, we are making progress to get there. Seventy-five percent through, I assure you.
Okay, so the difficulties, challenges you face in court, if you brought it up to DJ or?
I think it's in our proposal, to give us access to mobile phone towers.
Okay, all right, that's good, that's good. At least, that, that is work in progress, it's part of the Cybercrime Act or different act or?
Cyber, yeah, it's a holistic, but like I said, it's complementing the Criminal Code, how it shows evidence, Criminal Code and stuff. So they're only complementing, where the Criminal Court cannot support, cybercrimes and keeps in, because cybercrime is fairly new in this country, so that's why cybercrime, come to support him, to ask, get evidence, particularly the evidence part.
Okay, so helps you to get evidence for that?
The end game is to have the perpetrator convicted. So we'd like to do a tight case, or we'd like to manage the county evidence, so. But Criminal Code is adequate, but with the emergence of cybercrime and reporting, it doesn't give us power to, like I said, there are legal implications, there's a lot more. But learning from experience, we're making inroads, and like I said, it's we seventy-five percent through. But like I said, it's a collective from the whole of the team.
Okay, what about the two weeks delay to get that information from operators? Does it need legislative changes in NICTA or DICT communication?
It does, the communication.
Okay, are you guys working to fix this?
Yes, I think we're doing proposals, as far as I know, I think two, three months ago, I've seen the proposal to change.
So?
We, we, we can only suggest.
Yeah.
It's up for the.
Okay, so which, which act are you looking into, making proposals to change? Which Tele, Telecommunication Act or NICTA Act or which act?
Not NICTA, Telecommunications Act.
So the Department of ICT is in custody and of that? So Secretary, you are aware of that particular proposal to?
It's, it hasn't gone down yet to them, we're tidying up.
Okay.
To give them to consider, because I'm back, come back law sponsoring agent, I mean, stop law, but the obstacle.
So you're working on that?
We're working on that.
So that, that, that's, there, there seem to be couple of legislation we're working on?
Uh, just amendment.
Amendment?
Amendment.
Amendment?
Amendment, that's all, not new, fairly new amendment, just, I mean, where we find obstacle, partly with law and order, if that can be affected, law next amendment.
Okay, so you, 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 awesome, you policy now, you legislation maker to one? I mean, police department or you consult someone to do your policy and legislation?
Based on our experience and obstacles, we can only propose to them.
Okay.
To make, to cater for the law, particularly with under the national security clause, and they can consider, but we cannot force on them.
Okay, that's, that's, so when, when will be a proposal for that particular telecommunication, changes to Telecommunication Act?
Well, probably now in October, November, December, people tidying good past them, because there's a lot of experience, like same, but I'm talk, this like, I'm facing, so.
So there's a team within your police force working on it?
Yes.
So can we put a timeframe, because I'm affected NICTA and like Cybercrime Act and all this?
I don't think much of the cybercrime, it's only the telecomet law give the power law document for the communication towers, so it's only one act we're dealing with. Cybercrime, it's complementing what we are doing, so I'm good.
So it's, it's.
It's only the telecom.
So who's modifying the, who's, you, you also working on the proposal though?
We're working on the telecommunication set. But like I said, we only proposing.
Okay, so they will do the changes, but you tidying it up to?
For them to consider.
Okay, so that's one of the.
This is the perfect time, you have the communication minister and police minister is the same person, where it can easily be done. This is the perfect time, you have the Communication Minister and Police Minister is the same person where it can easily be done.
Thank you. I already conveyed.
I had you.
Yeah. Okay, please Nikta, contributing from your hand.
Yeah, thank you. We actually look forward to receiving the contributing from our, yeah. But it's actually the National ICT Act of two thousand and nine, as I said earlier, and that is the subject of review and amendment. So I think as governor has noted, it's timely. So if we can receive the, the proposal at this time, it would be timely to advance those amendments. But it's not the telecommunications act, that's been suppressed by the National ICT Act two thousand and nine. And then the regulations that the cyber, the same, we're also looking at that holistically, whether those, the particular regulation needs to be updated to accommodate some of these current developments.
Yeah, I think we, we are interested to look forward to all those worries, changes to legislations. Because we are this time where digital crimes have been committed. There's an experience where a digital crime translated to a physical crime. Couple of instances where digital crime translated to physical crime. It's, it creates physical crime. So that's, that's, that's the kind of time we are living in, so we have to be prepared. So all the legislations, any legislations that need to be amended or proposed, please submit it. We, we left another inquiry again on based on the, because I mean, you know, finishing good example or something, you're like need to work here, you're like, you know, so we, we will be the parliamentary committee will represent the people of Papua New Guinea and follow up on what you guys are doing. So that we make sure that that process and that legislation in place to capture those.
Sorry, Deputy Commissioner, it's not a related question to communication, but related to police. Like, for example, even in correctional service, some months ago, you know that last year when jail breakout happened in Lakimata, many have escaped. So when they escaped, like I was at home, somebody, commander coming to tell me that there are about twenty-eight or thirty-two people have escaped. So I asked them, do you have some photos of them? They just gave me just name of, just their names and the village names, that's all they have. There was no proper photo evidence. I thought like in the movie when we see as soon as get arrested, then the guy was standing and taken photo and, you know, recorded and all those things. Do we really have such system to record, you know, as soon as police arrest them or? Because right now there is no photo, even in Kimbei, there is no digital record of all those, you know, in the police station cell or in Lakimata. So it's very hard to really identify when breakout happens. Like in many other countries, it's a matter of just before used to be a fax machine, as soon as fax, fax goes to every branch. So they can't, you know, hide, they can't do some criminal activity in Port Mosby and hide in Haagen or somewhere because the Haagen Police Station also received a photo of that person. So everywhere, everywhere it's alerted that this criminal has escaped and every police, you know, in the country to look for these people. In our system, I see in MTV sometimes in that radio awareness program, I see that photo all comes of certain criminals, you know, come. Forgot that police officer name is very popular, you know.
David Terry.
David, yes. Likewise, do we have a digital file record of all these criminal records? Like in Lakimata, they do not have it of all the convicted. I mean, these are convicted criminals, some are in the remandies, all the remandies, of course, may be no photo. But I thought anyone arrested, then we should have their photo, you know, for the file.
Normally we have photos in Borocco, but I'm not really sure about the provinces, but in Borocco we have, but with the system now, the ICT reform currently ongoing in the RPNGC. We're seventy-five percent through, it's about fingerprinting and photographic. So eventually brings out to all the, so if a criminal commits a crime in Mosby, if he goes to say we work, fingerprints and the facial election automatic lap is, we still around Oracle system, now it's phased out, it's system of the seventies. So with our ICT reform, we're doing, we're making road related, so basically it's fingerprinting and photographic at the same time. But like, yeah, we, we taking steps address both in Mosby and we go into the center. So once a prisoner is convicted or coming before the police, we take photograph and fingerprint.
Because in some places, in some countries I've seen, beware, aware of, you know, aware of criminals, pick packets and they put all the photos of these guys, you know, when you walk around in the crowd, just be aware of these, these characters. These are, I do not know by legally, you know, because these are known criminals or known to be, but they are not in the station or locked up, but they might be in the public. So I see a huge, you know, banner with photos of all these faces of different criminals. Just to inform the public, just beware of these criminals.
We used to have that, so we only revolving but now into the digital space. So getting, it's in, in, in provinces they have, but it's like in isolation. So we're trying to put everything together into one digital space. So we have criminals, not only the face, but the fingerprints. And we can, anytime when they escape from prison, we can say this, the guy you look for, both on the sides, short and the front view. So we have that, but we're trying to transform that into digital space. So like I said, it's seventy-five percent true. Thank you.
Okay, I think we, we should wrap it up now. I think in terms of structure. So cybercrime is actually not a cybercrime unit, it's, it's actually CID based in the provinces. It's, it's not a unit of its own or it's, you see the unit of its own in a, every police station or police command should have a unit of its own or it's, it's part of CID?
It's a unit of its own, no, cybercrime unit.
Now it's a unit of its own.
It's a unit of its own.
Under your structure?
Under CID structure, so adequately funded.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so that means that all provinces should, it's a, it's a provincial level unit or a police station level?
Our provincial level.
Provincial level.
Like I said in my earlier conversation, we've established OIS, but we need to build up the capacity. So they recognize cybercrime comes under the CID director and it's fully funded. There are unit of its own to deal with cybercrime issues.
Okay, so it's every province should have a cyber unit?
Yes.
But there are some provinces not set up?
Not set up, like I said, it's, we still in our infancy, seven mile is the start. We will branch out to Robaul, Ley, Haagen, the mention, and then we go into the provinces over the next three, five years. So building our capacity.
Three, five years is, is.
Looking at our capacity.
Three, five years is the crime is committed everywhere, it's not giving you time to.
Unfortunately, that's, that's the problem we're facing and we're coming back to the government every time. Now we cannot police, this is impossible in a country. We have about six thousand plus police officers policing a country that is almost fifteen million, that's impossible. But cybercrime is one of you giving prominence, like FSVU, cybercrime are giving prominence because, so we're giving prominence to cybercrime. That's why we establish, like I said, building our numbers is one thing, building spaces in the ballgame. So it will take three to five years from my estimation.
Okay, so it should be set, do you need collaboration from the provinces to help you to set up cybercrime unit?
It's a purely police function, but if we need policy support, we go back to, it's basically like we stepped up the FSV in the provinces, it's basically the same thing. We branch out, so it's basically creating of a space, equal to them with men, resources, and that's it. So that's what we can do within our own capacity as police, and we've done that. But it's now building up the capacity and bringing out to the rest of the provinces, Thomas, La France, Imgarla.
So you have plans to build up their capacity?
Yes.
Already using from contractors, sir?
The contractors are giving up, particularly the contracts, basically the high-level crime and law contracts, based on contracts. Providing both a technical and a policy advice.
Okay.
But we have police officers on the ground, but like I said, coming back to training and ill-equipped, so we're getting to that space gradually.
So where, where is police providing the training in Bomanau for the cybercrime?
Cybercrime, basically it's the training, you may not start yet, like I said, meet all next year, I'm basically for the training. But for, and go back law CID here, basically most of the cybercrimes, we deal with under criminal code. Evidence wise comeback to track him now, it's a bit of a, one of my, so I'm just seeking advice law. Our own ICT that contract officers, sometimes there's a desk provided by our team, but I'm glad, one, one specialist called Totti is doing well in the organization. So we kept him to hot sauce in July.
Hey, you, you want to say something?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Just to, whilst we have the opportunity, just to informing, talking about awareness. Coincidentally, all the agencies on the table will be actually involved in a, a awareness, a month-long awareness campaign for this month. And I think it's going to be starting as early as Friday on cyber, cybersecurity awareness. So I think it's timely, the agencies before you actually are part of that awareness campaign, which will start as early as Friday. With that, let me invite the, with your concurrence Chair, Chief Legal Officer, just to share with you some of the work that is happening to strengthen the legal framework as well as the capacity building efforts to support our, the police.
Okay, very good, very good.
Thank you, Chairman and Members. I'll be quick, I'm Ola from Nikta. So Dr. Mitna, the Department of ICT and Nikta, as Papua New Guinea, the Council of Europe, which is responsible for Budapest Convention, has reached out to Secretary Mataina and myself because we attended the last meeting last year. And there is a training for e-cybercrime trainers workshop. And we've reached out to RPNGC, to Police Commissioner and to ACP Crimes, Hodzazete. And police have nominated Inspector Fiona Kakarere, who is currently the course manager for CID training at Bomanau Center of Excellence, formerly Bomanau Police College. So she's going through preparations to attend the trainers workshop on, on cybercrime. So even though PNG has. Trainer's workshop, so when she comes back, she, she, she will impart that to all the policemen and women who are going through the college.
Very good, very good.
Yes, so doctor is aware of that, I'm, I'm just trying to inform the, the committee. Also notice that in our, in one of our hearings, one of your hearings, there was mention of PNG accessing to the Budapest Convention.
Yes, yes.
Which is just the European countries, but now non-European countries are joining. As the Department of ICT Deputy Secretary Shongol has informed, NEC has endorsed for Prime Minister to go direct to the Parliament Speaker to, to get a certificate under section hundred and seventeen, I think subsection five.
Yeah, because we are late already.
Because of national interest ground. And then to go and deposit a, a, a instrument of accession November. So November is, is, is probably one of the closest dates that we can deposit the accession instrument. Also, the head of state, our Governor General, His Excellency, has been invited to attend the signing of the United Nations Convention Against Cybercrime, that will be in Vietnam in two or three weeks' time. So that's a brand-new convention, international convention against cybercrime.
That's a UN?
That's the United Nations one, that was passed on Christmas Eve last year, adopted by UN. So our Governor General has been invited to go and sign on behalf of PNG. Yes, so those capacity building opportunities are, are coming from not, not only within the country, but in the agency, but from international partners such as United Nations as well as the Council of Europe. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's very informative. I think that will help you build your cybercrime training at Bomanau. Because one of your CID trainer will go, that's really good. I think, I, I think that's at least some good news to wrap up our inquiry for today. Thank you so much, Dr. Mitna, for your, for your presence today. We face many challenges, we try to, at least one part of the society, if we fix it, it will be good. If you correct one part and media is, media is one area, social media is a big and wide and very big area. But if we can address one part and bring it to some sort of level of control, that would be really good. Thank you Deputy Secretary for your attendance, thank you Chief Sensory Officer. Thank you MD for CEO for Nikta, please. Just like, what am I, two G, three G must off. Two G, three G off. We have situation in a remote areas where mothers, when they're trying to, we have midwife. Me, me like talk like importance law four G network. We have mothers, they're doing mid Wi-Fi, all are carry, all are carry, they need help, they can just video call and HTO online law, awesome law, Wawel Center, my district, Wawel Center or Morobe, Angao. Or by video call now, directly more, also allow to treat more sick man. That's the importance of why we need four G network at, at, at our remote areas where we have challenges in medical, delivering health services and education services at the, at the rural village level. So this four G, three G and two G must, there must be a timeframe and put the maintenance, you can go to four G and five G. And those who are not sharing towers, build towers, build under UAS, give me the list of towers who build under UAS and we want to ensure that they have to set the towers. So that, that will enable communicate, competition, so a lot of providers can go on that. Anyway, thank you for your presence today. We will, next inquiry will be based, mainly based on technology. And that's when we drill, drill down on number portability and gateways and IFMS system and payroll system and all these things. But now we are focused on the media aspect, so we, communication is also part of media, so we. Thank you lawyer for your presence. Yes, Budapest Convention is a important convention that we have to be part of. UN Convention is a new one, we have to be part of all this. Now we have listed all the legislation that those who are in e-safety direct rate, supposed to be responsible, convention, policies. This committee is taking track, track of those proposals, this committee is taking track of those and we will be calling inquiries again to follow up on those legislations and conventions and proposals you are doing. So keep after, keep representing our people to keep, keep you on track on those things. But thank you so much for your attendance this afternoon. Please give them a big round of clap, attendance. Yeah, we'll, you come tomorrow and we'll take a group photo.
Take today.
Ah, you, 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 you want to go? So our, our inquiry will stop tomorrow, you going tomorrow too? Are you not be attending the inquiry tomorrow? You are very important to attend the inquiry tomorrow.
He was very dedicated last, since yesterday, all day is here.
Yesterday all day, today all day, so.
Okay, you have your, someone to represent you tomorrow?
Yes, I will appoint someone to, and I also have my manager who's also here on the awareness.
Okay. So tomorrow will be an interesting discussion, it will be on the fourth estate. And so we have three, four pillars of democracy, the legislative, the executive, the judiciary. And media is the fourth estate, fourth pillar. So afternoon session will be on the fourth estate. It's an important pillar of democracy, we will find out whether it's important or not. If it is important, if it is legislated or not, if it's institutionalized or not. So that is the question we'll be asking tomorrow. So I invite all of you, especially who are interested in the journalism, media to attend tomorrow's session. So we, we will bring in a soul, state soul, Department of High Education and also Department of Education also to be part of the inquiry tomorrow. I think, I'm, I'm the solo, me, governor, you have anything to add? No, but member for Goelala, you have anything to add? No, God? As we all know, we are, we are a Christian country and while we are, we have started the session with prayer, we sit close with prayer and I think no better person to pray than our Chief Sensory Officer, Commissioner, Officer here. Please, all of us stand there, you may pray and you can close the session.
Let us bow our heads and our prayers. Dear heaven father, thank you so much for all through this day and yesterday. Lord, thank you for giving us the wisdom and direction for us to discuss with our committee that has been said by the government. I also thank the heads of the departments who were here. Lord, you have also guided them to give that direction and with advice and what is for the country as well to. Lord, this afternoon, I pray that whatever we discussed, it is good for this nation. Lord, if we have said something and if. Lord, if we have said something and if had one another or something that it is not in line, Lord, we ask for forgiveness and help us and strengthen the work that we have been doing. I also pray for the chairman and also the parliamentary committee members of, for communication. Thank you for giving them that wisdom, that knowledge so that they can lead the country with the problems that we are now encountering with the communication space. Lord, help us so that we can continue to improve on areas that we have failed. Forgive us something that if we have failed our people, Lord, I ask you for your forgiveness as well too. This afternoon, as we dismiss and go to our various places, Lord, I ask for, and I pray for the travel mercy upon each and every one of us and we will return tomorrow again. Once again, Lord, forgive all our failures, mistakes that we have committed and this our prayers in Jesus Almighty Savior's name. Amen.
Thank you. Please, people can come to front, they mix him, mix his photo.
Two sense, no, we have by sense, sorry, photos.
No, no, you was not, we, 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 all get a lot of front, if we can, come close, come close. All can come on up, yeah, yeah, some can come up.